Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our West Covina City Council meeting today, August 15, 2023. It is 7:07, and I am Rosario Diaz, Year Centennial Mayor. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Matt Chavez from One and All Church, and I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you tonight that we get the great opportunity to come because that means we have breath, and when we have breath, we have purpose, we have life, and we have a meaning and a plan. So we thank you, God, tonight for all of our council tonight, Lord, and supporting teams and people coming out tonight, God, to support because we do love West Covina. And you always say to pray for our city, to pray for our state for that matter, and all of our country and all of our leaders. But, Lord, we thank you, God, for wisdom. We thank you for clarity, Lord, and we pray for just your favor because when our city prospers, we prosper, God. We know you love us, God, and you always provide. So we thank you, God, as we continue to work through so many different things that we surrender everything to you, God, because we know you're in charge, God. And we thank you, God, that you're always guiding and you always provide. So we thank you for your favor, your peace, and let your face shine upon us tonight. In Jesus' name, everybody said.
Amen.
Thank you.
Put your right hand over your heart and plead out for me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you can please remain standing, and we want to have a silent moment for the Maui fires. Thank you. The city of West Covina is rocked by the devastation and wildfires in Maui the fires have caused. I would like the community to know that we mourn and stand in solidarity with the families that have lost loved ones, homes, and property. Our heartfelt support goes out to the community of Lahaina, Maui, surrounding areas. Thank you. Assistant City, I'm Ian Clark. Roll call, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilman Contos?
Here.
Councilman Wu?
Yep.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Present.
Mayor Protem Tabatabai?
Present.
Mayor Diaz?
Here. Is there anything to report in our closed session?
Nothing to report, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're going to move on to presentations. I want to invite Albert Nunez and Fire Chief Capelli to the front.
Testing, testing.
Testing.
How are you? This certificate honors Albert Nunez as Paramedic of the Year 2023. He received this award from Eminent Health, Queen of the Valley.
Good evening, council, mayor, council, staff, citizens. Firefighter Paramedic Nunez and the rest of the Fire Department staff is here. I want to say that I'm not surprised that Firefighter Paramedic Nunez was the Firefighter of the Year for Eminent Health. He's an amazing employee, very proud and excited about this. I want to say that Firefighter Nunez has been with the West Covina Fire Department for over seven years. He's been a paramedic for over seven years. He has been out on many multiple EMT deployments, paramedic deployments, on wildland fires to help other of our neighbors on mutual aid resources. He has been at Explorer Academy, part of the cadre for explorers. He runs our flashlight detail, which means he manages every flashlight that we have, the ones on the rigs and the ones in our pocket. It means he has to deal with me with purchasing through finance to get them. He does a great job keeping us up to date on that. He also is also academy trainer, does our PT with them, with our new recruits. He is bilingual and is also a paramedic preceptor. I want to say that he's also spent his volunteer time doing a 24-hour CrossFit challenge for children's cancer. He's done it twice, one time came in second, and one time came in first with a bunch of teams who did 24-hour challenge, different events, and so that's representing West Covina Fire Department and the West Covina community for that at another community, which is amazing. So I want to talk about a little bit about what Queen of the Valley said about Firefighter Paramedic Nunez. They stated that, well, for 2023, he always has a great bedside manner. He has excellent paramedic skills. Nurses there and other folks at the hospital said they've learned from him. They said he has outstanding patient care and dedication to go the extra mile. Quoting also, one person said, "He's my personal vote. He is always expressing concern for the patients he has treated. He may be a couple of weeks before I see him, but he will approach me to ask about a patient he transported, to find out the outcome, radiology results, lab results, et cetera. Then he will reflect to see if he could have done anything different. This is the kind of person who will be a leader and ultimately help drive changes to improve the care that we deliver to our patients." When I read that and hear that, it just tells me that he wants to know how he did, how the patients did, what he could have done different. Did he do everything right? And just learn from that, which is very proud to hear that. And I'm pretty sure that everybody wearing a West Covina fire patch is not surprised to hear that. And I just want to say, Firefighter Paramedic Nunez, I'm very proud to give you this from Eminent Health as Paramedic of the Year for 2023. Thank you.
And on behalf of the city of West Covina, we have a certificate here to recognize Albert Nunez for Outstanding Contribution, Paramedic of the Year 2023, Eminent Hospital. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We also have a certificate of recognition presented to Albert Nunez in recognition of outstanding service from Josh Newman's office, Senator, 29th District, August 15, 2023. Yay!
First of all, I want to thank Chief Capelli, council, for allowing this recognition to happen during a council meeting. But I also want to take time and acknowledge the personnel of the West Covina Fire Department. We truly have the best paramedics in the area, and any one of these guys could have been up here receiving these awards. And I want to give a big shout out to my crew, Captain Dan Kohler, Engineer Eric Eisenberg, Firefighter Paramedic Dan Saldivar, and Firefighter Paramedic Sharar Flores. I've been working with those guys for a few years now, and, you know, every call that we run, it's not just me there, it's a team effort, and it takes a team to be successful. And I'm just thankful to have good partners and a good crew. So, thank you, guys, again.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, I'd like to invite Jason Huang to the front. Hi, how are you? The Community Service Foundation is receiving this check from the West Covina Education Organization.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jocelyn, spelled J-I-A-S-L-E-N. I'm representing a company, SAE, which is C. American Education, which provide affordable -- thank you, to provide a affordable touring service for first grade to 12th grade student, also at the same time providing space for college students to gain work experience. So, I mean, overall, we're here. We also want to give our thanks to the Police Department as well as Fire Department. We are, I've been here in the West Covina City all my life so far, but I'm still planning to stay.
Thank you.
Yes, and I will definitely continue to, if opportunity continue, allow us to continue to contribute in any way, I will be very happy to. And I know Film It Festival is coming up, and, man, I wish back when I was in high school, we were making sure Film It were rejoining the festival yearly, nonstop. And I appreciate it, everyone.
Thank you. Councilwoman Leti Lopez-Viado, would you like to come down as well?
Sure.
Leti has been very involved with our Film It, and I know she's very proud of it, so I want to make sure that she's here to receive it.
So I just, you know, well, I just wanted to thank the sponsors, just so you know that this goes back to the students. It's straight student-led program. I just wanted to just quickly just mention this year, with the help of our sponsors, we expanded the festival to include students in the entire East San Gabriel Valley. Every year, we keep getting bigger and bigger. Our event's completely student-run, from our MC to stagehands to tech support, photography, and more, and we're excited to provide paid opportunities for students this year. So, again, thank you for our sponsors. And I just wanted to make it known for anyone who wants to stop by, it's this Friday, 6:00 PM. Come support all the students. Again, they're from the San Gabriel Valley area, and it's going to be here at the West Covina Civic Center. We'll be having three live student bands perform, industry experts, speaker, including Vincent Rodriguez, who starred in that TV show, My Crazy Ex-Girlfriend, which was filmed here in West Covina. And so he will be here if you wanted to take pictures with him or ask questions. And so we just wanted to say we're excited for students to learn, ask questions from people in the industry, and finally, we're going to premiere and have the red carpet experience with their swag bag. So all this, again, goes back to the students. They get their scholarships, they get little goodie bags, and it's a fun, great event for learning, and it's nice to have it here in the San Gabriel Valley. So I just want to say thank you again for this sponsorship opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Roxanne, want to come on down? Yes, absolutely.
On behalf of the city of West Covina, the staff, the mayor, the city council, we just want to thank you from the bottom of our hearts for your generosity, for recognizing the importance of investing in community programs and community events and just helping to spread the positivity. So thank you.
Thank you for -- thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Before we move into our oral communications, we want to adjourn this meeting in memory of Carolyn Arnt. Carolyn Arnt will forever be remembered as a dedicated and caring person to her family, church, and community. As a 66-year resident of West Covina, Carolyn has been involved with numerous volunteer activities. Most notable was her influence, starting the food bank movement in 1980s. A personal project of hers was to form a bell choir in her church. She served on the Historical Society Board of Directors for close to 20 years. In recognition to her dedication to West Covina, she has been Citizen of the Year on two occasions, 1993 and 2014. We want to thank her for her work that she's done for our community, very well-known, very beautiful person, and I had the opportunity to spend a little time with her, and she was a very kind woman. Thank you. Now, we'd like to move on to our oral communications. If anyone would like to address the council, please fill out your yellow speaker card and submit it to the Assistant City Clerk. When you hear your name being called, please start lining up in the center row. The timer will start when your name is called to speak. How many speakers do we have?
I have six speaker cards, Mayor.
Okay.
Our first speaker is John Schumaker, followed by Jill Dolan, followed by Dr. Martha Garcia. Mr. Schumaker?
I want to talk about the mayor's prayer breakfast. Wondering who, you know, it's about the community and fellowship and conversation. Who all has been invited? Has Jamie Roca's group been invited to give a prayer and a blessing since they were so highly insulted by the mayor? Is the mayor going to talk about some of the comments that have occurred in the city, such as, "I'm a Hispanic woman, but I don't think like them," you know, asking for some forgiveness? How about that, "Dreamers are cockroaches"? That brings the community together. Or, "The council needs to recruit more young white families." That's the way to make people who are not white, at least by that person's definition, welcome, doesn't it? "Council districts are racist." People of color, like Jefferson Droux, want to be white. And probably the most appalling, although those are, you know, when it comes to one out of 10, those are probably 9.9, was to say the son of Holocaust survivors who lost 25 of their family, almost wiped out the entire family during World War II, saying, "That person wants to be white." You know what that sounds like? Sounds like a guy running around with a funny haircut and little mustache during the 20s, 30s, and 40s, who justified what he did and his nation did to people who were Jewish because they weren't considered human. This person, who lives with the mayor, says that, "Oh, well, if you're Jewish, you're not white." Are we going to have a Jewish rabbi giving a prayer? To show you how appalling that is, go out to the Internet, and there's various organizations that have had people talk about what they faced, and you will find Victor Orley's mother and father talk about what they faced, the problems that they faced over the years. The mother, to this day, I think she's 90, 92 years old or something like that, receives a pension from the German government because of what she faced when she was younger. You know, but what makes this even worse, and the reason that that funny little guy with the mustache in the 20s, 30s, and 40s could do it, is people who were in leadership positions stood by and said and did nothing. The other four of you have stood by and done or said nothing. You are as much at fault for not saying something about this conduct. I will give you, who are on the council, the night that I brought up the fact how, oh, he said my wife was in hell, that when she was laughing, you guys were looking at her like, "What is going on here?" But then again, you never said anything to her about her conduct, about her conduct that has brought disrepute to the city. So how can you sit there and go to this prayer breakfast, we're going to talk about community, when the attitude is, "If you're Jewish, you're not white"? As I said, it sounds like the little guy from Germany, actually, he was from Austria from the 20s, 30s, and 40s, and people stood by and didn't do too terribly much until it was too late. And just on a little side note on some of the other things, is there going to be a discussion about calling our city treasure a fat bovine? That sure makes people feel welcome, doesn't it? Or how about another community member who refers to her as a fat leather-faced hag, and she sits there quiet and doesn't say a word about it? And, oh, when the Jamie Roca's group was here, false claims that they were going to be violent, so we need more police here.
Jill Dolan, followed by Dr. Martha Garcia, followed by Matthew Smith.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. I'm Jill Dolan. I'm the Director of Public Affairs for Mount SAC. Nice to see all of you again. We'll be welcoming back students to Mount SAC campus on August 28. And as of last month, our fall credit headcount is about 20,000, and that's up 500 from the same time last year. In case you're wondering, student enrollment in credit classes is approximately 55% face-to-face. And in spring 2023, nearly 2,900 of our students indicated that they were West Covina residents. After Pomona and La Puente, West Covina sends the most students to Mount SAC. To meet the needs of industry partners to combat wildlife fires in the region and statewide, Mount SAC has created a Wildland Fire Technology Certificate and Degree Program to train and certify wildland firefighters. The coursework will be starting this fall, and we'll be offering the first Wildland Fire Academy in winter-spring 2024, enrolling up to 40 students in the academy twice annually. Obviously, separate from the Maui fire, we know that wildland fires are continuing to affect California, so these jobs, the students will have jobs upon completing it, and they'll be making good money. We just received news recently that Mount SAC was named a top community college for Hispanics and Latinos for 2021, according to the Hispanic Outlook on Education magazine. Mount SAC was number five in terms of associate degrees granted to Hispanics and Latinos, and in that year, that time period, we awarded 2,569 degrees, representing about 65% of all degrees granted that year. We also made the top five list, number four, for the number of Hispanic-Latino students we enrolled in fall 2021. During that time period, Mount SAC enrolled 16,409 Hispanic or Latino students, or about 64% of our total enrollment. And for 2022, 23, our numbers remain about the same. And lastly, Mount SAC College will join more than 60 other community colleges across the state in becoming a Fresh Air campus when the fall semester starts in a few weeks. That means the use of any form of tobacco, including vaping and e-smoking devices, is prohibited on all college properties, grounds, and buildings, including parking lots. And 65 out of 116 California community colleges are 100% smoke and tobacco-free, including e-cigarettes, and of course, we're happy to be joining that list. As you know, Dr. William Scroggins retired at the end of the academic year, and so tonight, I'd like to introduce you to our new president, Dr. Martha Garcia.
Martha Garcia, followed by Matthew Smith, followed by Bill Elliott.
Good evening. Buenas noches. I'm Dr. Martha Garcia, and I have the privilege of serving as the new president for Mount SAC. Joining me this evening are two out of the three trustees that serve this city, trustee Laura Santos, trustee Robert Ivalgo, and we have one more trustee that was not able to join us, and that's trustee Gary Chow. I wanted to take the opportunity to, first of all, thank you for your service, secondly, introduce myself and communicate the commitment that we have at Mount SAC to work with you and build bridges that ultimately will contribute to social and economic development through education for the students of this city. So I look forward to getting to know you and collaborating with you, and I commend you for the program that you have established to engage youth and college students. So it's a pleasure, and I look forward, like stated, to working with all of you. Thank you.
Yeah. First thing, I want to say, welcome. Second thing, can I have your contact information? So if we need something, we can contact you, and we can directly to communicate, hopefully help our resident try to enroll or some issue, okay? And hopefully, we can work together with Mount SAC, it's outstanding community college, and we are very proud to have you, since we have a lot of our resident, okay, enroll, including my staff, one of in your school. So hopefully, okay, we can work together closely, so hopefully it can provide us the contact information. But thank you so much, and welcome.
I will do that. And I just want to, last statement, I want to share with all of you, I'm a proud community college graduate, and I would not be here standing in front of you in this role if it wasn't for a community college. So I will do that.
Thank you. They have it. Thank you. Thank you.
Matthew Smith, followed by Bill Elliott, followed by David Schwartz.
Good evening, City Council. We'll start off with softball news or update. Senior Softball is having a two-week book drive donation for the senior center and the youth center. We're working with Roxanne and Vanessa on that. It seemed like the books were a little bit low for the checkouts of both centers, so Senior Softball is running a two-week book donation. I can't lie, we're baseball guys. I saw the early donations. There's a lot of baseball books that are going to be coming your way. Hopefully, there's some fans out there, but we will be donating in two weeks to both centers. Looking forward to that. For business, Bun Street, Scoop Street, Tamale Street, I want to thank the city for hosting the Concerts in the Park, six nights. It was very well organized. I want to thank Vanessa for putting that, excuse me, I want to thank Vanessa and Roxanne for putting that on. It was done extremely well, and I know Roxanne's staff was there, always on time, early, doing balloons. Our tables were set up, hotspots were there, and the organization from a business standpoint was greatly appreciated, all six nights. It was done extremely well, and we have gotten some referrals in regards to those events. You know, they saw us at Concerts in the Park, it's been mentioned to us, hey, we saw your concert in the park, we liked that menu, and they've asked us to do further events. So, so thank you for hosting. It's not the easiest thing to do. I saw it opened up six nights, and, you know, six nights for six weeks. So thank you for that. I do want to inform you that I did go to the Planning Commission regarding outdoor eating, and I read an article in The Tribune regarding LA City Council and the Planning Commission. Planning Commission is coming up with a plan to present to City Council for vote for approval for outdoor eating and dining. They have a permit, it's a potential permit program. They have a plan for ordinance that they plan to give to the City Council to agendize, to approve, that would extend outdoor eating through December 31 of this year. And then from there, potentially do permits, et cetera, and change the ordinances. So I've got one, two, three, four, five for the City Council articles, and two for the City Manager and -- Take a look over that. I also have a summary of Assembly Bill 61 and Assembly Bill for Legal, and there's a lot of writing in this. I'm going to read you Section 2. It states, "The planning and zoning law authorities, the legislative body of any city or county, to adapt ordinances that regulate zoning within its jurisdiction as specified under law, variances and conditional use permits may be granted if provided by the zoning ordinance." So, the state's given authority to do this. It would take a vote by you to approve it, to give that extension to December 31. My experience is that I haven't heard anybody speak against it. So I would greatly, you know, suggest that we continue working on this. Pauline, you just say at the last meeting, and I'm extremely grateful for this, that there is a plan being worked on by the city right now, and if there's any kind of assistance needed from me or other owners, we could certainly help with that. But I greatly encourage through the planning or through an agendized item by the five of you that this be approved and extended, because it certainly seems legally it can be done, but it would take, you know--
be done, but it would take, you know, board approval. I totally understand that. Thank you for listening to me tonight. Here is a summary of AB 61. And as always, thank you for your support. And I'm glad, if there's anything we can do to help with the process, please let me know. And I've said it before, without you guys' help and assistance, we would have had a really tough time during COVID. That was huge. That's 50 seats outdoors. So thank you for your help, and hopefully, we can continue to help each other in regards to this.
Thank you.
Bill Elliott, followed by David Schwartz, Schwartz, followed by Glenn Kennedy.
Good evening, City Council. Council members, Councilman Contos of the Forest District, Councilman Wu from the 5th District, the mayor, representing the 3rd District in the whole city, Councilwoman Leti Lopez Viano. And last but absolutely least, is Lion Brian Tabatabai. Oh, I mean Calderon! Tabatabai, ee! I never saw anybody try to turn Iranian last name into an apellido. It's very clever, very creative. But you continue to be the master of disaster in this city, the author of confusion. There's not a doubt in my mind that if a little boy came to you in your class, that you'd put a skirt on him and slap some lipstick on his face and chop off his wiener without his parents knowing about it, wouldn't you? On that note, I want to transition to something about Carolyn. Carolyn Arnt was a really remarkable person. I didn't know her very well, but I got a chance to spend some time with her, and she told my wife and I the story of how she became a flight attendant, and not when she was 20 either, or 30, or 40, or 50, or 60. I believe she became a flight attendant in her 70s, and she had a long career. And she was a remarkable person. Carolyn was a bridge, not a roadblock. Carolyn was a really gracious person, who I didn't always see eye to eye with, but we always saw each other heart to heart. Some things on social media this week about her, tributes and whatnot, and it's just so funny that people, the claws come out. Even when someone dies, the claws come out, and snide remarks are made about just everything that, except what should be said. So God bless the memory of Carolyn Arnt. There aren't many like her. The people of West Covina, if you could stand Carolyn Arnt up against anyone in West Covina, she's probably in the top 10 citizens of this city. She, I don't even think she weighed 100 pounds, but she cast a long shadow in this city, and she will be greatly missed. This is the first year that I attended every single concert in the park or in the Civic Center, and wow, those bands this year really were impressive. Some more than others, but there were, I mean, when we heard Cold Duck play, we were like, wow, they're so good. And then the very next band was even better, and that's an understatement. That Bruno Mars tribute band was fabulous. He had the look, he had the moves, he had the sound, he had the voice. The band was excellent, and it was packed. There were more people for the Bruno Mars tribute band than there were for Cold Duck. And just when I thought that couldn't be topped, forgive me, I can't remember the name of the group, but...
Stone Soul.
Stone Soul? Wow! I hope we can have them back. They were so fabulous. When the lead singer got up on stage, I said, this is the guy that's going to sing Soul? But he was good, and he sounded just like the recording of every record he covered that night. They were so good. And I really enjoyed attending the Concerts in the Park. So happy we have that here in West Covina. It's a great thing for the community to come together. You see a lot of people you know, you see people you don't know, you make new friends. It's a really great event, and I'm looking forward to the state of the city up at the Sportsplex this year. I went last year, and wow, what an event, and it's going to be even better this year. And when the community comes together like that in something that is promoting the community, that's lauding the community, that's acknowledging the community, and our community members, and our public safety, our police and our fire, they're so important to this city, it's immeasurable. West Covina would be a very different place if it were not for the crew of this city and the staff. Thank you.
David Schwartz, followed by Glenn Kennedy.
Hi. It's been quite a while since I've been up to the podium here. Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Temp, Councilman, Councilwoman, it's good to see you back. I hope you're recovering well. What I have today is just a bunch of things that I've noticed around our city. I feel like, especially my district, which is your district, the mayor's, that things are getting worse than they're getting better. Good examples are at the Glendora Plaza, which is at Glendora and Vincent Avenue. Every single day, it is getting graffitied. The windows are getting broken out, they have wood up against the buildings right now. There's trash, and the homeless are making camp there. It is getting worse and not better. The other, another place is the northwest corner of West Covina Parkway in Vincent, the number two lane going west. The lane is deteriorating, and it needs to be repaired. It's been like that even before the rains. When the rains came, it got worse, and right now, I can't believe it's such a major intersection in this city, and it's in terrible condition. Also, yesterday, I went to the credit union right over there by the West Covina Fashion Plaza, and what a surprise that was. First of all, I see that the parking lot that's right next to the, to the post office looks like the night before cars were doing their circles around you in the parking lot, and I found dozens of empty beer cans in the parking lot there. Now, I heard the car from my house the night before, and we got to put a stop to that before it gets worse, because I hear these cars now constantly now. I happen to be in a two-story house, so I can hear, all the way down to the MetroLink, I can hear it. So I think, oh, okay, so that part in the West Covina Plaza next to the post office. Now, not only did I see the car, the tracks, and the beer bottles, the biggest thing that I saw was this woman that was wearing a coat just up to her hip and nothing else, and her breasts were hanging out of the coat, and she was middling around the credit union. And as I walked away, she started, she started to, what's the word I want to use, tampering with the ATM. Now, I know there was a security guard out there, because I saw him in his car, standing up, looking at the credit union, and they didn't do anything about it. So those are my main concerns right now. And so since I have a little bit of time left, I'm going to speak about what Mr. Shoemaker said. My background is, I'm the son of a Holocaust survivor. My father was born in Poland, in a city called Zalmust, and he had seven siblings and a mother and father. They all were murdered in the war. My father was the only survivor because he escaped and left his family. My father got captured, he had numbers tattooed on his arm. Somehow, he made it, and he made it to America. He became a citizen of America, and so I'm very learned about what's going on. I don't want to see any of my councilmen or women using anti-Semitic words here. It's not appropriate. I don't know who's doing it or what it is, but it's not good for us as a city. We got to stop teasing everybody, and I also want to say I'm sorry if I ever disrespected you. Even though we don't get along on politics, I shouldn't have ever said, called you stupid or anything like that, but...
Glenn Kennedy, followed by R. Robinson, followed by J.D. Mr. Kennedy.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. Glenn Kennedy, representing the Historical Society tonight. Let everybody know that this Saturday, August 19th, 6 o'clock, the Summer Fest. So tickets are still available, they're $45. We're having a beautiful historical Hirsch Ranch. Now, can I give the phone numbers out? That's 626-664-3050. And I had one more thing I wanted to say, Madam Mayor. So when we did the Veterans Memorial out here, I did all the research, and we knew when we did the World War II Veterans that we were going to have an issue, because I was told there were six, we could only find two. Well, I found two more. And I, who will I, can I contact, because their names need to be put on the, on the wall, and they need to be honored. First guy is William Lang. The Langs owned the property on the north side of the freeway, North Orange and Garvey. So their property went from Orange probably down to Workman and probably to Conlon, okay? And he was on the USS Snook, and it went down the Luzon Straits. The other gentleman is Holbert Cushman Jr. They lived at the northeast corner of Lark Allen and Puente, and he was killed in Pelu. He's a United States Marine, was killed in 1944. And see, the problem was, when you research these people, it does not come up West Covina. It comes up LA County, like Mr. Lang came up Covina. Now, the Cushman came up Almani. So when you go, it says his address, but it says the township of Almani. I don't know how, but that's, that's how it says. It's made it very difficult to find these people. Anyhow, we need to put their names on the wall. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Bill Robinson, followed by J.D.
Mount SAC doesn't teach synthetic biology or AI-driven transhumanism. And I'm, tonight I'm going to be concerned with fifth-generation warfare. We need to keep fighting for medical freedom, recognize pervasive surveillance that surrounds us. Maui is looking like Lexington and Concord to me, another East Palestine, Ohio, train derailment, including complete government response incompetence again. Messenger RNA gene editing shots may be altering human DNA. Scientific American Magazine in December 2019 reported that a Chinese court sentenced and jailed for three years a Chinese scientist for illegal medical practice for editing embryos' DNA. Likewise, we need to stop exterminating or experimenting and exterminating our own children because the sham emergency has ended. Messenger RNA gene nanoparticle editing, artificial intelligence parasites, self-assembling, electromagnetic devices that were shot up with, they're medical devices, according to Karen Kingston. We need to rediscover product liability. In 1986, the Industry Bill Liability Waiver highlights the problem of, of lack of government oversight. All the three-led letter agencies are hollowed out. Lobbyists need to include, needed to include liability waivers for the pharma industry. But this, but this liability waivers for, quote, vaccines doesn't include bioweapons. According to researcher Karen Kingston, she says sheriffs need to be seizing the bioweapons now. The patents show that the nanotechnology is embedded in everyday products, and every single human has been exposed to these common products. Our current focus should be on three points. One, spike protein contamination exists in the public blood supply. And two, provide help for people that have been injured. Three, better study the recent surge in turbo cancers and autoimmune diseases, especially for young people with no pre-existing conditions. Potentially, there is a cancer tumor DNA sequence that could be inserted that causes the tumors, the tumors. The vax may be, may have lowered white blood cell counts, that's immune thrombocytopenia. I've mentioned before how the vax screws up our immune systems. Anyway, all of our babies should be shielded from receiving the vax. Liberty, life, and happiness don't have to be curtailed by fifth-generation warfare. The trap being set by the WHO includes the following communist agenda, and I'll recite a 20-point list of possibilities. One, implement vaccine passports, which excludes people from society if they don't continually take experimental bioweapon booster injections. Two, implement social rewarding and mandatory digital ID close to a Chinese-style social credit system that gives brownie points when people comply with official mandates and remove rights when people resist. Tyranny is easier in an urban setting. Move most of humanity into smart cities.
J.D.
It seems like you're trying to get rid of me real quick. I still have 17 points.
Yeah, but we gave you five minutes. Thank you. You're getting shorter too?
I'm Mr. Robinson. Wait a minute, what do you mean? You called me, didn't you?
I did call you, sir.
Yes, you did. Thank you. Good evening. The city requires that I bring out my trash can and take it in on a schedule, and I've seen residents come here, the elderly person that was given a citation, because either they left out the trash can or brought it out too early. I think you commented on that particular case, Mr. Wu. And I've got a trash can, a city trash can next to my house, and I've seen trash cans at downtown West Covina overflowing with trash. Mine's adjacent to my porch, and I called the city, that came down here, and Roxanna, she helped me with it, but that was over a month ago, and it hasn't been emptied. So I don't take up much of your time, I'm just, I have one question. Does Athens pick up these public trash cans at all these bus stops, weekly, biweekly, monthly? What is the schedule? What is the schedule of pickup? Because right now, school's out. But when school is active, those trash cans overflow with trash. I've come to the determination, I'm just gonna blow it out into the street. I'm not gonna pick it up no more. So it seems to me that if the city's gonna hold the residents to that level of accountability, it should, too, should live up to it. Yes, Mayor?
I have a question. Are these trash cans by the bus stop or are they standalone trash cans? Where are these trash cans that you're talking about?
The one that affects me directly is adjacent to my porch, front porch, next to the bus stop.
Okay.
Cased in a metal iron.
Yes.
Enclosure.
Okay.
But yes, so it's close to my property. But I, I have plenty of pictures if you care to see of trash cans overflowing. My concern tonight is, is Athens responsible for picking these trash cans up weekly as they do for us residents? I appreciate an answer from that. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further speaker cards, Mayor.
Acting City Manager, can you please respond?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. So I wanted to thank Jill Dolan and Martha Garcia from Mount SAC for coming and doing the presentation. We greatly appreciate that. We always value establishing partnerships with our local school districts and, you know, neighboring schools and colleges and universities. So thank you. And we look forward to working with you guys and hopefully partnering in some projects or programs. Matthew Smith came in and spoke about the positive, I think several speakers, about the wonderful summer concert series that we had this summer. So we're grateful that we had residents attend and that they've come up and shared that they had a good experience both on the business side and as residents. As mentioned before, the outdoor dining, the city is currently working on facilitating the process to make that easier for our businesses to get those outdoor dining spaces. As part of the Development Code update, we're looking to see what we can do to help those businesses sooner rather than later. One of the items was that Bruno Mars was a very well-attended event. Just wanted to highlight that they will be coming back to the city for the Moon Festival that we'll be speaking about in a little bit. So if you are a fan of the Bruno Mars band, they are coming back to West Covina. And then someone, Solar Thunder, we are gonna be doing State of the City and I'll be talking about that shortly. In regards to graffiti and some issues throughout the city, we encourage our residents to use our reporting app. It helps us geocode what, you know, the issue. And if it's graffiti, then we work with, if it's a private property, we work with the property owners to resolve that. If it's on public property, we look to address it through our staffing. In regards to the mall parking lot, that's something that we can work with the Plaza West Covina. They maintain and patrol those, those properties. So we can talk to them about that. In regards to, yes, there's the Historical Society event this Saturday and we encourage residents to go. The Mayor's Prayer Breakfast is coming up and I'll be talking about that during the City Manager's Report. And we will look into, we'll get back to J.D. on the trash can issue. So I think that sums it up.
Councilman Wu?
Yeah, okay. I just want to answer J.D. Okay, the bus stop, I think we contribute out to the nonprofit group. Okay, and they've cleaned the bus stop. Okay, I saw them sometimes. So I don't know how frequent. So maybe some of you can answer. I think they clean up once a week. Or, okay, but I did, okay, saw them, okay, and they clean up the trash. It's not from Athens. It's from our, they clean the bus stop and same time they clean the trash. Okay, and I know, I think during my period of time, okay, we approve with this nonprofit group. Okay, and they are needed, yes, they are needed, okay, special need person. Okay, and we hired them to, okay, to clean the trash in community, okay, not the bus stop. So, but I, I don't know, is it once a week or can we increase in the time, maybe they can, okay, stop by? Yeah, go ahead.
Do the chair, if I may, if that is what the council would like to consider, we can definitely bring forward some options and look into just increasing the efficiencies in regards to that particular contract.
Quickly, I think we are talking about update our bus stop. So maybe we can come mingling, okay, kind of talk about this in the next agenda.
We will be bringing a staff report regarding the bus stops throughout the city in September. So that's something that we can address as part of that because as you mentioned, the bus stops are with the trash cans, so.
Yep, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman?
Just, just for the staff reference, I think the organization is Valley Light Industries to help you find the, you know, who you should talk to.
Thank you. Also, can we address the two individuals that need to be placed on the memorial?
Oh, yes. If Mr. Kennedy can provide us that information, just to make sure that we have the, confirm the spelling, that would be great. So we'll follow up with him.
Okay. Thank you. Can we move on to the City Manager's Report?
Sure. So I know that we've highlighted a lot of our summer concerts, the events throughout the city. Just wanted to highlight some programming that's happening at Palm View that we recently opened up this year. They had their end-of-summer barbecue with the special appearance by Sparky. So Engine 3 went out and, you know, was part of the end-of-summer barbecue with the participants of the program. Another one is the Senior Center. We have a lot of programming there. Sometimes we don't necessarily highlight it, but there's always something going on. I think every Friday they have activities, events. This last event, they did, they made cocktails and mocktails with our chefs and with a member of, from D. from the Cove, the business here on Glendora Avenue. So it's a great opportunity to partner with our business community. On the agenda tonight, you have this fee schedule update that we'll be discussing. As part of that, we will be going out to the community for community workshops. So we're encouraging and inviting all of our community members to attend one of two workshops. The first one will be Monday, August 28th at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. The second community workshop will be September, Wednesday, September 6th at 6:00 p.m. in Cameron Community Center. So it's gonna be an opportunity for the community to provide feedback on our fee schedules that is gonna be presented to council tonight. As some of you may have been noticed when you came to the meeting tonight, we are resurfacing our city hall parking lot. So the last item that we have to do is restriping and that should be done by September 1st. We have two last cleanup Saturdays with Athens. This Saturday is for those individuals that have their trash picked up on Thursday. And the next Saturday, August 26th, will be for those individuals that get their trash picked up on Friday. There are items that are not picked up, so please make sure that you, you can go on our website or on here. Auto parts, construction debris, concrete, waste, electronic waste, rocks, loose trash, or household hazards are not items that will be picked up as part of this program. So we are having our first Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. It is next Thursday, August 31st, 7:30, and it's at the Taylor House at the Heritage Park. All faiths were invited to be, to participate in the program or in the event and we, everyone is invited to participate or to attend the first prayer breakfast with the Centennial Mayor. So we hope to see everyone there. We are hosting our State of the City and Employee Recognition Dinner event this year. It will be at the Sportsplex again on September, Thursday, September 28th, starting at 5:30. Sponsorship opportunities are available and ticket sales will be, tickets will be on sale this week. So we hope to see our residents and our business community at the event. Also, just wanted to provide an update. We are programming the Sportsplex. So this is just a calendar of the different leagues that we have, that are scheduled at the facility, from men's softball, adult softball leagues to practices. And then we have various tournaments coming up in August and in September. So we are making sure that we're programming that facility. And then this is just a list of upcoming events. San Gabriel Valley Senior Softball Book Drive, the Film at West Covina Festival this Friday here at the Civic Center, starting at 6:00 p.m. As I mentioned, the prayer breakfast, Tetcha Truck, September 23rd at, here at Civic Center as well. State of the City at the Sportsplex, September 28th. The Moon Festival, which will be Saturday, September 30th, on Glendora Avenue from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., featuring Bruno Mars. So I hope everyone can attend. And then the West Covina Quanis Cartober Fest, August 21st. So just a couple upcoming events. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Councilman Wu?
A quick question will be, since you mentioned everybody invited for the mayor breakfast, so do they have to register so we know the number of people? Otherwise, you don't have enough for breakfast for people to sit or eat, right?
Yeah, we encourage, it's a $25 donation and we encourage everyone that would like to attend to please RSVP through the Eventbrite link and that way we can make sure there's sufficient seating and food for everyone that would like to attend.
And also the State of the City, the ticket, how much is the ticket? Okay, so people need to register, okay, and buy the ticket too, right?
Yes, so the ticket sales will be going out this week and it'll, we'll be doing a social media post. It'll be on our website. We'll be promoting those ticket sales this week.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to our consent calendar. Does anyone want to pull? Anyone? Any item from one to five?
Thank you, Mayor. Just number, number two.
Anyone else? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar with the, with the exception of item number two?
So move.
Second.
I have a second? Okay.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu, a second by Councilman Kantos to approve consent calendar with the exception of item number two. Before I take role, I just want to read the title of an ordinance that we are adopting. Ordinance Number 2516, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, Adopting an Amended Military Equipment Policy Governing the Use of Military Equipment Pursuant to Assembly Bill 481. Councilmember Kantos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Tabatabai?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Item's passed 5-0, Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just have a concern with the fact that we are gonna be having our finance director also acting as the, acting human resources. And I, I just wanna know, do we have a timeline for fulfilling this position? Just because especially the HR position is so important to make sure that any complaints that, that are made are taken care of, due process is given. And that way the city can keep itself protected from any liability. So, you know, and also, you know, our finance director, she, she does a lot of great work. And so as you start to spread people thin, that's, that's where the concern is. So I, I just wanted to know, how is the, the search and do we have a timeline? Thank you.
No, thank you very much. So we are aware that, you know, sometimes we are stretching staff thin. In the past, we have had, throughout West Covina's history since I've been here, we've had instances where we've had a director that's finance director and HR director, or two directors right now because our former director left. There is a vacancy that needed to be filled and so she is stepping up and assisting us and making sure that there is someone in charge of that department in the interim. We are moving forward with recruitment for the position and so hopefully we will have some good news or some news in the next couple of weeks. But we do understand that it's a critical position and so we are moving forward to filling or filling that vacancy.
Okay, I'll move the motion.
I'll second.
Can I get a confirmation on the second?
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Tabatabai and a second by Councilwoman Lopez Viado to approve item number two, which is consideration of a proposed opponent, appointment of Acting Human Resources and Risk Management Director. Councilman Kantos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Tabatabai?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Item passes 5-0, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to public hearings. This matter set for a public hearing consists of Code Amendment Number 23-2 and Ordinance Number 2515 pertaining requirements and standards that would allow beer and wine sales at service stations as an auxiliary use. Will the city clerk verify the proper legal notices have been made?
Proper legal notice has been made, Mayor.
Good. At this time, I will open the public hearing on the project. There will first be a presentation by the staff. Then we will share, shall hear those in favor of the project and those opposed. Who will, who will be presenting the report?
Madam Mayor, Joanne Burns, our Planning Manager, will be providing the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. I'll go ahead and start off my presentation with a background and history of similar code amendments. This is actually the fifth time the code amendment has been considered in the last 15 years, starting from 2008. Previously, the other code amendments considered were either abandoned, rescinded, or no action was taken. The Planning Commission last heard the item on April 25th of this year. The Planning Commission recommended that the City Council deny the code amendment and not adopt the proposed ordinance, consider the matter on the general election ballot. They also directed staff to provide the City Council relevant survey information for surrounding cities, research on, including 20, a minimum or 2,000 square feet convenience store for a qualifier if the City Council were to consider adopting the code amendment, obtain crime impact information, and obtain sales tax, tax impact information. In regards to the crime impact information, Acting Chief Tony Cortina is available at the end of my presentation for his, to provide information on that. The, the items on the projector are proposed changes to the sections of the municipal code. The proposed changes were obtained from the letter that Ms., Mr. Kareemee submitted to the city, since he was the, he is the applicant and requister. Currently, the West Covina Municipal Code does not allow alcohol sales at service stations. All other off-sale uses require an administrative use permit approval. The objective of the proposed code amendment is to allow, again, beer and wine sales at service stations through a conditional use permit process. If the ordinance is adopted, it does not necessarily mean that all service stations or gas stations would be allowed automatically to obtain a license from the California Alcoholic Beverage Control to, in order to sell beer and wine. They would still have to go through a conditional use permit process, which is a public hearing process in front of the Planning Commission if they wanted to sell beer and wine. And the conditional use permit would have to be approved by the Planning Commission and also subject to appeal by the planning, by the City Council. This section, again, clarifies that a conditional use permit would be required. And also, the entire site would be required to comply with current code standards in order to qualify for the conditional use permit process. The requirements on the projector are unique to the city for the The requirements on the projector are unique to the city for the specific use. I'd like to point out that the CCTV requirement, or CCTV proposed requirement was not in the previous version that the City Council reviewed. And also, the 2,000 square foot minimum convenience store size was not included in, or is not included in the draft. This was what the Planning Commission recommended, and the ordinance is being presented to the City Council as it was presented to the Planning Commission, because the Planning Commission did not recommend its adoption. And the standards on the projector are the requirements that the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control requires for the sales of beer and wine in general and also in gas stations. I'd like to point out that if, if the Code Amendment is adopted, staff would like the City Council to consider adding on, or clarifying language, or other fee-based operated video games or video game, video entertainment machines shall be permitted on the premises, mainly because the coins are not used as often anymore as it was in the past. So, still following the same California ABC language and still has the same intent, but an updated version. Staff surveyed six surrounding cities, the city of Baldon Park, Covina, Almani, La Puente, Pasadena, and Walnut. All surveyed cities require conditional use permit for the sales of alcohol, and they do not distinguish any difference between the standalone convenience stores and convenience stores within a gasoline station. So, based on this survey, yes, if square miles is calculated, the city of Walnut would have the lowest concentration at 1.55 per square miles, and West Covina would be second to the least at 2.8 square miles. And La Puente would be the most for, 9.48 for every square mile. There are, the city of El Monte and La Puente, they have unique, certain unique standards in, in dealing with alcohol sales in general. And La Puente requires retailers less than 5,000 square feet to be at least 800 feet away from another retailer that sells alcohol for off-site consumption. And Almani requires crime rate reporting areas and, and requires specific findings. Some alcohol-related statistics pertaining to the city. The city currently has a number of, total of 46 places that have active business licenses that sell off, alcohol for off-site consumption. And among these are 25 liquor stores and 21 supermarkets, pharmacies, or department stores. There are 20 gasoline stations in the city with convenience stores with active business license. And all of, all 20 gas stations, again, have convenience stores. There are seven gasoline stations that are at least 2,000 square feet in floor area, which was the item that the Planning Commission suggested that the City Council consider limiting the number two, or having a minimum two number. The, the 2,000 square feet, the seven, this doesn't necessarily mean that existing convenience stores and gasoline stations cannot be expanded. Currently, the number is just, is seven. With this, staff, or it is recommended that the City Council conduct the public hearing and consider introduction, introducing the following ordinance, which is Ordinance 2515. However, prior to opening up the public hearing, Acting Chief Tony Cortina will present information from a public safety perspective on the issue.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, city staff, and members of the community. My name is Tony Cortina, and it is my honor and privilege to serve as the Acting Chief of the Police Department. I've been asked to comment on the proposed ordinance to change land use related to the concurrent sale of alcohol and motor vehicle fuels at gas station convenience stores throughout the city of West Covina, and how that affect, and how that may affect call for service or crime. I believe the effect should be explored in a fair and impartial manner. In regards to the potential impact, alcohol consumption can contribute to an increase in crimes. However, it is important to remember that crime is a complex issue influenced by various factors. While alcohol sales may contribute to crime rates, it is not the sole determinant. Social economic factors, location, and community dynamic, for example, also play roles in this. The city of West Covina already has off-site licensed locations throughout the city where alcohol can be purchased. These include everything from liquor stores, convenience stores, grocery stores, and retailers such as Target or Walmart. From 2021 to 2023, the Police Department averaged approximately 1,465 calls for service each year for a variety of incidents at locations that have off-site licenses. Of these incidents, 6% were directly alcohol-related calls. Because of the many-
I'm sorry, how many percent?
6%.
6%, thank you.
Because of the many factors that determine crime rates, I cannot with any accuracy predict the effects on calls for service or crime rates with the passing of this proposed ordinance on its own. In conclusion, I'd like to add that the state alcoholic beverage control is a entity that has jurisdiction over the issuance and regulation of alcohol licenses throughout the state. They are also the primary agency that conducts inspections of licensed establishments to ensure compliance.
Does Council have any questions for anyone in our staff or our Acting Captain? I'm chief. Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
I had a quick question. So, when you get these alcohol calls, just out of curiosity, do you ask where they got the alcohol from, or how many is inside, or, you know, where did they come from? Where, yeah, just where the alcohol came from?
When we conduct any sort of public intoxication or DUI-related incidents, that is a question that's asked in the reports. And I do also believe that ABC has a program to track and identify certain locations that may be overselling, mostly as a onsite type establishment that would be, would fall under that.
Such as bar, right?
Like a bar, yes.
Oh, you mean, you mean to say that the alcohol consumption is at that location where they consume at that location? Or is it just, they just got a pack and started drinking?
Yes, because it's usually tracked by over-serving, and that's, that's a big issue.
Got it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Wu?
Yeah, and I want to, starting with the staff, and then can go through some, okay, the number about safety issue, but I want to, okay, quickly, okay, I think we have this, like, never-ending coming back. During my time, I already have a couple times about hearing, I think last time, okay, it's 2019, okay? We have a Planning Commissioner approve 5-0, and they came to us, I think that's in the October 2019. And we tabled, we tabled it to get more information from the Police Department, so we didn't approve or decline, okay? We just tabled it, okay? And then, and then when we, okay, they want to bring it back, okay, we just, okay, we ask the city so we can get more information from you, so we can get this thing, okay, okay, get all the details so we can make a right decision. So, but the city requests them to reapply again, so this time with a different commissioner, they give us a different suggestion, they still put it to us, want us to make a decision. So, they didn't, they make some decision, but this did, I think this time they denied, but they want us, okay, not appear, but they want us to make a decision to get all the detail from the police and, and the city. But couple question I have is, this, how many cities surrounding our city do not allow a day to apply the CUP and ABC application?
All cities surrounding West Covina?
Correct.
Allow alcohol-
Not allowed, okay, and then the gas station to sell beer and wine? Our surrounding-
Um, this, West Covina is the only city surrounding West Covina, or, West Covina is the only, the only city in the area that does not allow the sales of alcohol.
Okay, second question would be, how about in San Gabriel Valley, which city like us, with this coordinate, what, what year is this, this called in the 1970, right?
I believe in 19, late 1970s.
Okay, so 1970, we have this coordinate, so next question will be, in the San Gabriel Valley, which city like us do not allow, okay, the, then to apply through ABC?
I'm not aware of any San Gabriel Valley-
So, basically, we still the only one? Okay?
I believe so. I'm not aware of any San Gabriel Valley city that does not allow.
So, so, so basically, we the possible, the only city in the surrounding neighborhood, let's just say surrounding neighborhood, we have approved, so we are the only city to not allow then to go to CUP, okay, or apply, okay, through, okay, approval from the Alcohol Beverage Control of the state? Because we cannot approve, they can sell beer and wine or not, it's approval by the ABC. We only allow them, am I right? We only allow them to go to CUP by the Planning Commissioner, do the hearing, and then, okay, if they approve, they have to be conditioned, and they have to go to the ABC to get approval. And the ABC have to base on, am I right? ABC have to base on the population and then how many, and in this area to approve or decline their application per ABC guideline, am I right?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, and then, so, so in that way, city is not the approval agency, we basically just, like other city, allow them to apply through another entity, CUP, condition use permit, per their neighborhood and hearing, and then if the CUP approve, then they can go to the ABC and to get approval or denial. Am I right?
Yes, so the city's granting approval for the land use, whether or not they can have onsite or offsite alcohol sales. It is ultimately ABC that grants them the license to serve alcohol.
Okay, so, so now we go back to the, the, the number of the crime, okay, 6% per the code, okay, and 6%, how many from offsite and how many from onsite? Onsite meaning the bar, the restaurant, okay, and then they toxicate and then, or dislet?
Well, my, my data is only from offsite to collaborate with the proposed ordinance.
So, do you have onsite meaning people toxicate, make a scene, they have to call the police, then you guys have to show up? Okay, so do the comparison, how many alcoholic, or alcohol create issue to, sorry, to kind of use up our resource?
I don't have the specific numbers for onsite, but from my experience, the onsite locations definitely generate more alcohol-related due to-
Because they-
Drinking on that location.
And they fight.
They, well, yeah.
Okay, or they create issue and somebody called the police. So, so basically, this is the issue on the onsite and offsite, so your number 6% is offsite?
Yes, just for offsite.
Offsite basically is like a liquor store?
Yes, any, any liquor store, convenience stores, grocery stores, or again, retailers such as like a Target, Walmart, things like that.
So, the next issue would go back to the, okay, and the city, okay, Planning Manager, so we have about 20 gas station, okay, with convenience store. Some is huge, something is small, but they all have to go through the ABC or CUP, but forget the CUP, that's ABC, they have a requirement, right? How big, how, what's the, okay, location to have a storage, what kind of, okay, the setup, okay, that's controlled by the ABC. Am I right?
Correct.
So, so basically, our CUP is just create another layer of a restriction to them before they even apply to ABC?
Correct.
So, so if the ABC already have a restriction, so what is the point for us to increase even more restriction, okay, for them to go to ABC, since we do not, okay, approval the sale of alcohol is ABC approval? We just allow them to apply, and if ABC can approve, well, and that's based on the number, the only thing, the issue is in that location where they create the resource of our Police Department, that create potentially issue, I think that is the issue people concern.
Yes.
Am I right?
Yes, I believe so.
So, but if, if we have any other, something to kind of make a lesson, because the drink and dry, people don't drink and dry like, okay, I go to the restaurant, I just said, no, I cannot drink because I need to dry. Why? I don't want to get pulled over by you, then I will be on the newspaper, or the DUI, okay? And I would be car forfeit, okay, people potentially lose my job and humiliation, and maybe in jail for some bad thing happened to me, okay? So, so, so that's why I say no, um, so I think, am I right? So, can you tell us what is the punishment for DUI? And how often we, we, our officer will pull people off if they feel like they are potentially drink and dry?
We, we take DUI very seriously in the city, and we have several officers that received, the Mothers Against Drunk Driving, that's called the MAT Award for the number of arrests. And we also conduct DUI checkpoints and work closely with the OTS to receive monies to combat that. So, it is a huge priority of the Police Department, and it is a very serious crime, it could lead to-
So, we forfeit the car, right?
Well, I mean, it could lead to-
And, okay-
Injury and death and collisions and so forth. And it is a very serious, there's several fines that go into that.
Evoked driver license?
Yeah, suspension of driver license, potential fines-
Jail time?
Potential jail time, potential probation, and then multiple counts of DUI, add, exemplify the, the punishment.
So, so, so the issue is, is not only the drink and dry, is under influence, so influence including now, we allow people to smoke pop. So, that is a major issue, how you, how you pull people, okay, over, okay, and then, then you do the test, it's alcohol, but if they are under influence or something else?
We have several drug recognition experts that we put out into the field that do conduct under the, driving under the influence investigations, and they can determine if somebody is under the influence of some sort of controlled substance or marijuana in addition to alcohol.
So, so my last question would be, our Police Department will do a checkpoint from time to time, and then to all the different area to make sure that the city, okay, the people in our city, they know the punishment or the consequence of, okay, driving under influence, DUI?
That's correct.
Okay, so, so it's, it's not a convenience store to create, okay, driving under influence, basically is the people will do what they want to do, even go to restaurant, go to onsite, offsite liquor store, if they don't want to obey the law, and they can basically drive in under influence and create a big problem for the community. drive in under influence and create a big problem for the community.
Yeah, it really comes down to the judgment of individual person.
So any suggestion, how can we improve the public safety? But anyway, I leave this to all the council. And thank you so much, chief.
Welcome.
Quick, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor. Either you or Joanne can answer. Quick question, how many offsite locations actually sell one container item? Would either of you know? The reason why I ask, because I remember when this was brought to us in 2019, I did my research and the public knows where I stand on this situation. I told the public that I was 50/50 in in regards to the situation. Granted, I did vote on one, but I do remember, you know, talking to LAPD, we're all alcohol and everything is there. And LAPD did mention that the sites that sold only like one can, one container had the most problems because they don't have enough money, they buy one, they loiter, they they drink. That being said, I do see here on the proposed changes, you know, the sale of beer in quantities fewer than three containers is prohibited, which is great. But I know this is a proposed change, but I just wanted to know currently, I mean, is that allowed? And how many offsites actually sell one bottle? Would either of you know?
I don't have that specific data.
I don't have that information as well.
I guess for those who drink, I guess, I mean, the liquor stores, I'm assuming one bottle of groceries, they do, they do sell those, right?
Yeah, like you can go to the grocery store and buy a bottle or one can of beer, I believe, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to know that question. I yield for now. Go ahead.
Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a few questions, just because I want the public to be clear. First off, currently in the city of West Covina, in our municipal code, we prohibit the sale of alcohol beverages at service stations, correct?
That's correct.
Right, so so that is a city of West Covina ordinance that that has nothing to do with the state or or any other, right? So if you're a gas station currently, you cannot apply for alcohol sales because we currently do not allow.
That's correct.
Okay, great. The the other question, so it's just because we we also used to have a conditional use permit for for drive-throughs and and we put a moratorium on that. So we do have a precedent of prohibiting these types of things. So I just want to make that clear. I think the the other question, this municipal code has been around for for 40, 50 years, correct?
Since the late 1970s.
Late 1970s. Okay, so so then, just from an economic perspective, every every gas station that that chose to to come to the city of West Covina after the late 1970s understood that they could not sell alcohol, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and that of the 20 or 46 vendors who then decided to put their businesses in West Covina, like, so for instance, on Merced, there's a 7-Eleven that's next to an Arco gas station and a Chevron. They understood when they put their 7-Eleven there that they would be able to sell alcohol. Is that correct?
They they applied for an administrative use permit.
Right, so with with the understanding that the competitors, the Chevron and the Arco, would not be able to to take business, right? That there there was a market because these other two couldn't sell.
When, for instance, when the, as your example, when the 7-Eleven located in the city, I'm I'm not sure if they did know the Arco or the the other gas station would not be able to sell alcohol. Typically, when businesses inquire about coming to the city, they ask if their certain use is allowed. They don't necessarily ask if other uses are are allowed for other businesses.
But it would be fair to speculate that they did market research and they understand the the rules of the community and they would see there there might be an opening, a need, and so, because I'm just wondering, so because if we if we make this change, because it would be us that allow the alcohol, it would not be another agency, it would be us if we vote to change this, it would be the five members up here on the dais who would be making the alcohol, not someone else, then we would potentially be putting at risk businesses that came here with the understanding that there wasn't that competition. So another example would be there's a, there's like this this little market next to a Salvadorian restaurant, they're like within the same thing and it sells alcohol. But if we were to change this, the place across the street would then also be able to sell alcohol. So we could see a negative impact, not only on that that little market, but on the restaurant that benefits from the walking traffic, right?
According to the city's business license consultant, that a potential impact can be cannibalizing the sales of other stores.
Right, right. So I just, I want the public to be clear that any change we make here may may benefit, you know, certain businesses, but it will will definitely have a negative impact on on other businesses that have have come into the community with the with the current rules. So, you know, it's just something for us, for the public to understand, you know, when when people are asking, you know, while other cities maybe don't have this ordinance and why do we? Well, we also have to think about, well, we we also attracted businesses that may not have come here because we had this ordinance, right? And because we had this ordinance, maybe the 7-Eleven found, oh, this would be more attractive. Okay, thank you, that's it for my questions for now, thank you.
Councilwoman.
Quick question, Joanne, do you know what year did the other cities develop their gas station license? Because I understand back in the days, you know, there weren't service stations, they were, you know, just strictly glass, gas, and as we develop, everything expands. So I'm just curious if you would have been to have.
I don't have that information on, as far as other cities are concerned. However, I believe in the mid 1980s, this, there was new state law that basically said that if a city did not already prohibit alcohol sales in gasoline stations, they would not be able to adopt new code that would prohibit that. So in in that sense, I believe those cities did not have that code in place like as West Covina did.
Okay, and then as to what Mayor Protim was discussing about competition, that, you know, we've seen it here in the city, I don't know if you recall, when we had the donut shop, we had the residents come in and said, that's not fair for this poor donut shop, you're putting another donut shop right next to the donut shop in the same plaza, and there was an uproar. Granted, it pulled through, that donut shop is there and that small donut shop is still surviving, it didn't really hurt the competition and everything is good. So in regards to like competition and stuff, again, it's about convenience, again, it's about choices. So in that theory, in that sense of competition on that, I just wanted to let the public know that that did occur in the same city with the same type of line of work and industry. That's my, I yield that.
Councilman Cantos?
What, I'd like to ask the the acting chief, Acting Chief Cortina, what is the correlation between the sale of alcohol at these convenience stores or these types of convenience stores and any prevalence or increase in drunk driving or incidence of of allegations of DUI?
Because we don't currently have that in our city, I can't give accurate stats on how that will affect the city of West Covina. And anything I'd say would just be a guess and I don't want to predict anything that's not absolutely certain.
Okay, and then one of the things that are being considered is the installation of flock cameras. Can you describe to the public what those are and the extent to which the the installation of such cameras would be supportive of of law enforcement efforts to to address crime in the city?
Well, flock cameras are something that we have currently in place in the city. We have approximately 30 cameras and they, what they do is they read license plates and give real time feedback or notification to law enforcement if the license plate returns as a stolen vehicle or it's associated with any other sort of serious felonious crime. So it's a, they are very, it's a very useful and effective technology in reducing and preventing crime as well as enhancing public safety. We've had a tremendous amount of success in apprehending people from that just committed shootings to obviously being in possession of stolen vehicles to burglaries to even a murder. So it's been a very, very useful tool and technology for enhancing public safety.
And are these flock cameras installed only in public places or can they be installed by private businesses?
Oh, they can be installed by private businesses. There are a couple in the city, I believe.
And if the private businesses do install these cameras, then they would be networked with the rest of the flock cameras in the city?
Yes, and in fact, the network spreads to any other participating agencies in the city. So if we have a crime that occurs in our city, we can identify a vehicle and if another agency has had that vehicle in their city within a short amount of time as well, we can collaborate and it helps provide leads for solving serious crimes.
Thank you. And Madam Acting City Manager, how many stores could potentially end up installing the flock cameras to the extent that they may wish to choose to apply for, to sell alcohol at their establishments?
It would depend if the ordinance included that as a condition of approval for the CUP, then any gas station that wanted to sell off sale alcohols in their convenience store would be required to meet the conditions of approval.
So that would mean up to 20 gas stations could be impacted?
Correct.
Or seven?
Seven if it's, I think, 2,000 square feet or larger or 20 or all 20 if we don't have that square foot requirement.
So if we do not have the square foot requirement, then it would apply to all 20, in which case, in which case, if that were to occur, then that would mean that flock cameras would need to be installed as part of the conditional use permit, which would mean that it could potentially expand our network from 30 to 50 potentially?
Correct, yeah.
And that would not be at the expense of of city taxpayers because the businesses would be flipping the bill for the installation of the flock cameras?
Correct.
And the businesses would be therefore willing to install and maintain on an ongoing basis those flock flock cameras if, should they decide to sell alcohol at their premises?
It would be a condition of approval, so they would have to maintain or comply with those conditions. So if it becomes a condition to have flock cameras and have it continue to operating, yes.
So Acting Chief Cortina, that would therefore mean that it would significantly increase our ability to to address crime by a level of 40%? Am I doing the math right correctly on that? Or 66%?
I can't give a specific answer as to what it would be because, I mean, they could be, just depends where they're placed, there are so many variables, but I would say it's safe to say that it would increase public safety. The more of those cameras, I think, the better.
Potentially jumping from 30 to 50 locations?
I believe so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protim?
And when council's completed with questions, let's have the public speak and then we can close it and deliberate if we're done with questions.
Definitely, just have one one question. So so Captain Cortina, so are you saying then, in exchange for saturation of alcohol, more surveillance makes us safer? Is that, because that that seemed to be the questioning, that if we have more more alcohol, but we got flock cameras, we'd be safer. So is that?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Acting Chief. And now I'd like to open it to the public. I'm going to move to, let's see, who wishes to speak in favor?
Mayor, I have eight speaker cards in favor.
Okay.
And before I call the names, I would like you to know that I did email you to public comments earlier this evening that you had received earlier, but I re emailed them to you, so you are aware of those.
Thank you.
When I call your name, please line up and you will be given five minutes to speak. Our first speaker is Rosemarie Valero, followed by Patricia Valero, followed by Henry. Patricia, Rosemarie?
Madam, let's have the applicant speak first and then we'll have.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we're going to have the applicant speak first. The applicant is going to speak first. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, all the council member. My name is Mosen Karimi. I've been owner of the station on the corner of Workman and Citrus, 246 North Citrus in West Covina for 43 years. I've been serving community as long as I've been in West Covina since 1978. I've been applying with the for the beer and wine license because of my customer convenience. I used to be as a, I mean, all the gas station used to be a services station, repair cars, do this and that, but now it's different. It's totally market, it's convenient for a consumer. Only reason I'm applying for this, because really for my customer convenience. And I see the customer walking and now with no sale and that really bugs me, you know? I'm here to apply, I mean, I'm here to ask you guys, please, if you could do and help me out to get this journey over. Thank you, all the council member.
Thank you. Okay, now, thank you.
Our first in favor is Rosemarie Valero, followed by Patricia Valero, followed by Henry. Rosemarie?
I work in the area and I go by this this place every day and for me, it's very convenient. I put gas there and then I like to go into the little store and it's like a bigger store, so I like that it's, you know, I could get other stuff there. And then, like on Fridays, we have like company over at our house and I like to stop and buy stuff and then I can even pick up like maybe a bottle of wine or something. And it's, and I'm a very responsible person, so I would never, you know, just, I would take it home, I would never drink in, you know, the car or anything like that. But but I think that's a very convenient thing, instead of stopping at the market just for that, what I could just stop there for everything, I can get my a car wash and I can, you know, go to the little store, put my gas and everything. And and on Fridays, it's really busy, so it, you know, it'd be very convenient for for me and I think for a lot of other people. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Patricia Valero, followed by Henry, followed by Hoshi?
Good evening, beautiful people. I as well live close by and I work very close by there. And my husband will call me up, he gets out, you know, four o'clock, he goes straight home and he'll ask me if, you know, if I could stop by the convenience store while I get my car washed or get some chips for the kids, grandkids. And he'll ask me, can you stop and get, you know, a couple of beers? Well, I can't because they don't have beers there, but I do very close, work very close by there. And it's very, very convenient. On Saturdays, I go and, you know, get my gasoline there, fill it up for the week, do a car wash and I can't really go in in the store because my husband, he likes his beer and I'll have to go somewhere else. And it's, I'll have to drive like two miles away, just, you know, for convenience. So it would be awesome if you would get his license or his beer and wine there. Thank you.
Henry, followed by Hoshi, followed by Jamie Shepherd?
Good evening. I've been doing business with this place for 15 years. I do, I get gas, I do car wash, I buy a snack. The only problem is they don't have beer. So I would love. So I would like you to consider this and thank you so much.
Hoshi, followed by Jamie Shepherd, followed by Herbert?
How are you all? Good evening. I'm here just to say that would be very convenient for all the customers and everybody in the community. They come in, get their gas and snacks and if they could buy their beer or wine, if they wish to buy them and take them home, it'd be one stop. They don't have to go anywhere else, drive anywhere else, potentially have an accident or whatever else liability may come up. They just shop in one place. If they want a gas, they get a gas, want to use the ATM, they get, you know, to use the ATM, get a snack or a drink perhaps, sodas and buy their beer and go home. What's so big deal about that? Just because they have a gas pumps? That shouldn't cause this because, and besides, what I'm hearing is this was back in the days, you know, they said, no, they can't sell it because of service station. Service station is mechanic shop. Now these days, we are not mechanic shop. It is a convenience store. It is a food market. It's just like Vons, but in a smaller package or any other, you know, big grocery store that sell beer or wine or hard liquor. I should appreciate if y'all allow this, you know, go forward. So we, May, or any other customers wish to buy beer and wine from the store, so they don't have to drive to different places, make different stops, so they can just buy them in one place and go home. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Jamie Shepherd, followed by Herbert, followed by Shoker?
Hello, thank you for letting me talk. I just wanted, I, I live very close to that gas station. It's the main one I go to. Um, I used to go to a different gas station before, but because it changed to a mobile, oh, excuse me, I'm dehydrated. Um, because it changed to a mobile station, it became a lot cheaper. So it's been a, a one-stop shop for me. I'm new to the area, so it's been great to not have to run around and go to a bunch of different places. And like I came from Glendale and you can buy beer and wine at, say, the 7-Eleven right next to your house and I could just walk and, um, buy it, stick it in a backpack and walk home instead of driving even. So it's, it has a lot of conveniences, especially coming off the freeway or being a busy person like me working. So, thank you.
Herbert, followed by Shoker, followed by, I believe it's Sally Morales?
Uh, I know you heard the word convenient a lot and, uh, I think the main thing I want to say is it's about saving time. Most of you, I don't know what time you guys get off, but I get off at five and I sleep at 10. Uh, that means gives me five hours to do whatever I want. And like a lot of people, I like to relax, you know, avoid calls, avoid texts. I don't want to talk to my friends that much, but I do want to just, uh, have anything at a one-stop shop, like a car wash, fill up my gas, grab an apple because I am on a diet, get a light beer and, um, that's it, honestly, that's all, just to save time, five hours, that's all I get. And after this, I'm probably going to go stop by a 7-Eleven because I can't stop by the gas station. But, uh, anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shoker, followed by Morales, followed by Mario?
Hello, good evening. My name is Sodi Shoker. I am the owner of the station here for the Chevron and the Arca. I have been at that station at the Chevron for 32 years. I have served the community, served many friend, done many good things with the city, with the Meals on Wheels, there was a lot of school district, work on city's car, done all their alignment back then when they didn't have smog and all that, done smog for them. Still sell gas to school district on charge. You know, they come over, fill it up and they pay me after a couple of months, you know? So what I'm trying to say, gas station, there was a, the code was put in on the books in 1974. It was 1974. We're in 2023 today. Are we going to live in 1974? Are we going to live in 2023? It was put in, uh, those days we were service station. All I had, four bay repair shop and water fountain and a map on the wall. For, for anybody to come to gas station, if they're lost, they look at the map, they drink their free water fountain, they were good. You know, there's, sometimes they ask us, you know, where they're going or where this certain business are, but most time for, you know, other than a city customer, we didn't have any, you know, interaction with a lot of the traveler. So from that era, we changed. It's due to the property pricing, due to cars. We can't work on the cars that are on the street today. I don't have electrical charger. You know, most of the car come with a 10-year warranty, Kia, I, you know, and the Kia and that's the other one, Hyundai. So for 10 years, I can't even work on the car. If I wanted to have that service station without the beer and wine, I'm out of luck. I was forced to turn my station into convenience store due to all these other reasons, like I just said, one, I can't work on those cars, so does a lot of other stations. And also the oil company, you know, they don't want to take that liability. They sold the property to us. We own everything. We repair all their tanks. It's cost $700,000 to replace the tanks at a station, that if you don't have a leak there. So economically, we need every penny we can get, what is potentially, and also serve our customer what they need. We're not going to deliver beer and wine to people's house. We're not going to put in their cars. We're not going to open it for them. We can only sell it to the customer that want, that need, that came in already to my store. Customers that are already, they're asking, where's the beer? Don't have it. Why? You know, some customers are friendly and I try and I tell them why. They may say, this guy don't know what he talking about. Every other station sells a beer around the town. So I think it's time to change. I think we need it, but comparing with the 7-Eleven like you have asked, so like she example, you know, so how many 7-Eleven we had back then and how many other liquor store we had then, you can compare. You always want to evolve. There's always more business coming. More is not bad, more might be a good. You, you making everybody make that left turn into that 7-Eleven, you're crowding that one place. You know, your customer could be divided, your residence could be divided in three places right there. Maybe you eliminate a couple accidents per year. Maybe you eliminate the frustration of those customers. So again, you know, we applied many times, were turned back many times and we were comply, we will comply with any condition city will ask us. And it's ongoing, it's not just one time. And even you change the code, that doesn't mean I'm going to start selling beer tomorrow. I'm far away from that. It is more hurdle than just allowing to apply. There's two more, three mechanisms that I have to go through in order to sell beer. So please consider it's for your customer, it's for your businesses, you know, pay the taxes and all. All I can do request, cannot force, that's, that's my two cents on this.
Thank you.
Morales, followed by Mario? Is it Sally?
Yes. Um, mine's short. Um, I'm just here to say that I'm in favor of selling the beer and wine at the Eastland, oh, at the Eastland. Hi. At the Eastland Mobile Gas Station or it's the city of West Covina. I do believe that it's convenient and, um, I also think that it will help, um, businesses grow by giving consumers what they want. So that's all I have to say. I'm in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mario?
Hello, Mario Sobolvaro, District Three. I think it's important to understand why this ordinance came into place. Um, there's a history there. If you know why, then you know. Other thing I want to talk about, correlation does not equal causation. I've seen graphs where shark attacks matched the release of Nicolas Cage movies. You know, it doesn't mean every time Nicolas Cage makes a movie that there's going to be a shark attack or vice versa. Um, I just hear a lot of correlation, you know, try to make correlations of crime, um, drunken driving. There's liquor to be bought everywhere. It is a matter of convenience. Um, but going back to why, it's business. This was brought into the city by shrewd business. And at this point, just gentlemen have seen customers, you know, walk out, you know? I like, uh, a particular type of rum that they didn't sell at Freeway Liquor or anywhere in West Covina. I had to drive out to Upland because it was Aladdin type of rum. Told the guy Freeway Liquor, hey, if you have this rum, I would come and buy it from you. Couple of months later, he started stocking it. Awesome. Um, it's business. There's not going to be any additional crime. There's not going to be any additional drunken driving from this. So you give it a try.
Mayor, I have one more speaker card, Mr. G.
As a person who's never bought beer or alcohol at a convenience store, but has drank 40-year-old Scotch, I'm for it because it's a business. As the man said, he's been doing business in the community. I remember when there was only two 7-Elevens in the city of West Covina. My brother worked at one of them, I had a 16-year-old kid. Yes, it is very convenient and I do remember in the eighties when AMPM switched over because of the law and started selling alcohol. My buddy pulls me up, we go to a gas station, he says, well, I'm going to go buy some alcohol. We got to go to liquor store. I've bought in liquor and probably some of the city, state and federal governments sanctioned alcohol, very inconvenience. It's the individual that has to take the responsibility. It's not the city council to tell me to be my babysitter. When people take the responsibility and act noble and provide a business, that's what's going to make West Covina a better city. People always want to compare us to LA. The vast majority who, people who moved here back in 50, 60, 70, 40 years ago, left LA. They don't like LA. They live here because of the quality of life. Some of you work in the city of Los Angeles, a lot of citizens do, but it's about their families and the convenience. Yes, it'd be great if we had a bunch of restaurant rows where you sat down, but things have changed. Things have changed where I don't even leave my house to do banking, grocery shopping, purchase alcohol. I don't purchase drugs, so, but I'm pretty sure they have, people do do it online. So people go out and interact with the community. They meet their friends, they see somebody in the convenience store who's buying gum or getting gas. They say hi. That's what builds a community. And they care it's about West Covina or citizens, not worried about what the physical aspects of the shape of the eyes or how the sun reflects off their skin. They hold, they know, if they're citizens of West Covina, they hold to a different standard, a higher quality of principles and values for families. So business is what helps this community grow. With business, we're bringing taxes to do the programs, to pay for the bands, to pay for housing, like what they're doing up there in the old school, right there on, was it Vincent and Workman helping people do that? So it's about the family and business. That's what made West Covina, because the vast majority of the councilmen weren't servant, they were businessmen and that's what makes this city great. You want to return to a quality city? Be pro-business, not pro-issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have three speaker cards for those opposed. Opposed to that, yes.
Can move on.
Okay, thank you. Our first speaker is Shazard Shazir, followed by JD, followed by Mr. Bennett.
I'm very much against this particular issue. I don't think gas stations should be selling liquor, period, anywhere in the state of California or across the country. So I'm very opposed to this idea for the following reasons. First, combining the sale of gasoline and alcohol in one location could increase the risk of drunk driving. By having easy access to liquor at gas stations, individuals may be more likely to consume alcohol and then get behind the wheel. This poses a serious threat to public safety and could lead to an increase in alcohol-related accidents and fatalities. Furthermore, a wide range of people visit gas stations, including children and families. Presence of alcohol in these establishments could pose, expose young and impressionable individuals to the normalization of alcohol consumption. This could inadvertently contribute underage drinking and the development of unhealthy habits at an early age. Also, gas stations are often open late into the night, making them easily accessible during non-traditional working hours, liquor stores. This extended availability of alcohol could potentially lead to an increase in alcohol-related incidents during late hours when supervision and law enforcement may be limited. This poses a significant challenge for maintaining public order and safety. Having it readily available at gas stations may also contribute to an increase in alcohol consumption overall. Convenience and accessibility of alcohol sales at gas stations could lead to impulse buying and potentially encourage excessive drinking. This in turn can have detrimental effects on individuals' physical and mental well-being. By offering a one-stop shop for fuel and alcohol, gas stations may draw customers away from independent liquor stores, which we've talked about here, and it's going to affect their bottom line and it would negatively, they would be negatively impacted. These local businesses would be at a disadvantage, which could potentially lead to some job losses and economic hardships for these communities. In conclusion, your no vote would diminish the concerns over public safety, eliminate potential negative influences on young individuals, maintain order during extended hours, diminish public health considerations and the potential impact on local businesses. 14,000 alcohol-related deaths occur, last information I had was in 2021. Let's not add to them by allowing this agenda item. I would also ask that if you've been supported by the petitioner financially for your run, elections, you please recuse yourself from this particular vote. Also, just to let you know, in 2019, I think it was, 2,900 signatures of people who lived in, in the city of West Covina were opposed to this particular ordinance and I would ask that you guys respect them and I don't think they've changed their mind. And I would like to also know how many people who were pro live in the city of West Covina? I think there's two of them.
JD, followed by Steve Bennett?
I knew I was going to say something. Now, what's changed? I'm not surprised that gentleman that owns the, uh, gas station is in favor, his employees are in favor. are in favor, his family members are in favor. I am sort of in favor. As a free market capitalist, I very much would like to see it take place. However, I have to ask myself and consequently ask council, what's changed? We have more homeless, more crime than the previous five times that it was voted down. Were you fickle then, or are you going to be fickle tonight and change your mind? Look, Mr. Viat, you said you were fifty-fifty. But you have to ask yourself, what has changed in the city? Why is it that you voted it down before that would, now you feel so inclined to vote in favor of it? If you do, certainly your call, but I think you owe those that oppose it a reason for why you all of a sudden flipped. Don't just vote yay without telling us how this has changed. These changes that came to you tonight, you haven't had the time to explore the consequences, the pros and negatives of them. That was City Planning Commission's job, and they failed to do it. They tossed it over to you folks, and I can bet none of you have gone through it on a level of a commission and explored the possibilities, consequences. That's their job, Planning Commission. Before you make this decision tonight, I think you need to kick this football back to them. You've done that before, Mr. Wu. I think you need to do it tonight. You need to kick it back to them and tell them, no. You go through the ramifications of these suggestions, put it down on black and white, send it up to us, and then we'll decide whether we'll pass it. Maybe then we'll have justification for changing our minds from voting it down, not once, not twice, not three times, five times. If you're going to be fickle and flip tonight, please have the decency to explain to those that have spent their time to come here tonight and opposed it in the past as well as tonight, and give them a rhyme and a reason for your decision. Thank you for listening.
Steve Bennett.
Good evening, council. It's been a little bit since I've been up here to speak at you, city staff. Good to see you all. I missed at the start of the meeting what date it was. It feels like February second. I mean, Groundhog Day, right? We're doing this again for the fifth time. I mean, we even got Puxitani Bill down here in the front row. So, I mean, with all due respect, this is the fifth time. JD just alluded to it. Four previous times, it's been before the council. Four previous times, you guys voted no. Not necessarily all of you. The only two up here who haven't voted on it before is Councilman Contos and Mayor Diaz. They weren't on the council the last time. But what needs to be understood is all five of your commissioners did not want to approve this. All five planning commissioners did everything they could to not approve this until, Mayor, your council or your commissioner said, I don't want to make the business owner pay to appeal it. It's a cost. So let's just kick the football down the road and let's let the council deal with this. But here, here's some things we don't think you should do, but if you do, here's some of our things that we want you to do. So a good friend of mine, longtime friend of mine, used to come before this council and speak against this. His name was Forrest Wilkins, former school board member, longtime friend of mine. I've known him since I was a little tiny child, and he used to come up here and say jokes. And so, Mr. Wu, you remember Mr. Wilkins who'd come up here. I have a joke for you guys. A city council member was asked about his policy on beer, wine, and liquor. He answered, if you mean that demon drink that poisons the body and ruins the mind, destroys families, and creates criminals, then I'm against it. But if you mean that beautiful drink used for wedding toasts, the foundation of fun Friday night, and the biggest sources of tax revenue to fund the city's programs, then I'm all for it, and I won't change my mind no matter what you say. That's what we're dealing with tonight. Which side of this are you on? Which side of that joke are you on? And it was, you should have laughed, Tony. It's kind of directed for you, in honor of Mr. Wilkins. You've heard tonight from staff that this ordinance was put into place in the seventies. That's true. The state then changed the law, and any city that did not have this ordinance on the books automatically had to abide by state law. But those cities like us who did do something are grandfathered, were allowed to keep that ordinance in play. Well, back in the day, it was important enough to do it. They keep talking about service stations. Well, it's hard to drive when the car's in for service, so I guess drunk driving was a little bit of less of an issue. But the answer tonight is, why do we want to change? JD asked that question. What's different? Crime's higher, homeless is higher. All of the issues, all of the components are higher in the city that say, no, this is a bad decision. We can try to twist words, Tony, and ask questions, or even put into the captain, acting chief's mouth, some of the answers you want him to say, but the reality is, nothing has changed for the positive to allow this. Of course, the business owners want this. They're going to make more money. It's a profit thing, Tony. You're a business guy. People understand money. But the reality is, even if they increase their sales by ten thousand dollars a month, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, we only get ten percent, well, just shy of ten percent of the sales tax for easy math, it's a thousand dollars a month, but the city only gets one percent of that. So we don't even get the thousand dollars. By the time you add up the twenty that reached that convenience store status, and maybe only seven, we're talking negligible dollars to the city's coffers. Almost nothing to the benefit of the city to support any of your, you know, pay to pray breakfast or pay to go to the city's, you know, state of the city, which most of us know it's not great, but you'll put a spin on it. So the answer really is, what has changed? Why do we need to make this change? We are one of the last cities, if not the last city, in this area that has this ban. So why do we need to change? We passed a conditional prevention of allowing used car dealers on the Auto Plaza to prevent somebody to come in so that another guy could try to buy the property. So you're not pro-business, you're just pro-business that helps you. That's the difference here. Because you prevented a used car dealership in an area that sells cars. But here, you want to allow alcohol where people are already selling alcohol. Hypocrisy, cronyism. Good night.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have two speaker cards that are neutral. Our first speaker is Bill Robinson, followed by Glenn Kennedy. I do not see Bill Robinson, mayor. I'm going to go to Mr. Kennedy.
Hello again, Madam Mayor, City Council. When I was on the Planning Commission back in 2019, I voted for this, and I will give you my reasons why. This ordinance was actually put in, it wasn't seventy-four, it was nineteen seventy-seven. And there's a reason behind it, okay? Former mayor had a liquor store, and he wanted to corner the market. That's exactly what happened. Okay? You are, all you're doing is overturning an ordinance. It's up to the ABC. You say saturation. Well, the ABC is the one who will tell you if it's saturated or not. They do it in a square mile or like a square, not a square, but a circle. And if there's enough, if there's too many businesses that have alcohol license, you don't get one. Not only that, they have to pass, they have to come back for a CUP. That doesn't mean they're going to get anything. I, I mean, this thing is, every other city sells it. All, and it's the same people against it, same people for it. All I've ever heard is, oh, a car's going to crash into the gas station. Well, I've never seen a gas station blow up, have you? So I, I mean, it's, it's ridiculous. So those are my reasons. You know, I think this ordinance needed to go a long time ago. Remember, the gas stations now are convenience stores. At one time, they were service-based. The old days, you just bring out the tires, they had mechanic on duty. If you broke down, you fixed your car. But those are days are long gone, and, and they're all convenience stores. So they're not allowed to compete. And, and he said, it's been voted out four times. No, last time, you tabled it. Nobody here's voted on it. And so this is brand new. So do what you got to do. Thank you very much for your time, and have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll, we'll say that was not a neutral?
It was marked neutral on the card.
It's very neutral.
Mayor, I also have one member of the public who did not wish to speak, but she could fill out a card to give her comment. Ms. Jerry Padres is in favor of keeping the ordinance as is, is opposed to allowing the sale of alcohol at service stations, and would support having residents vote on the issue. And I have no further speaker cards.
Thank you. All right, now, council.
Now we could allow the applicant to rebut if necessary.
Okay.
If he wishes to.
Applicant, would you like to rebut? Will you want to rebut?
Whatever the council member thinks is right, you just, we are for it. You know, we are here to help the city. I hear a lot of negative comments. I see a lot of positive comments. But I see they make a comment, you're going to make more money. To be honest, it's all for customer convenience. I don't have to make more money. Just put him this, tell him. And remember, the gas station pays the most income for a city right now. More taxes, more income. Used to be used car, I mean, new car places. Now the gas station give the city and, I mean, the state most benefit of all the. That's all I can say.
Thank you. Councilman Wu.
Okay, and the first thing I want to say.
We need to close the public hearing.
At this time, we'll be closing the public hearing. Now, Councilman Wu.
Thank you, mayor. Okay, okay, I'm back again. Okay, so again, we never vote on this, okay? Last time, I heard this, okay, this 2019, and we three-two tabled. So we never vote, okay, as almost eight years to November, I never vote on this, okay, alcohol or gas station ordinance. Okay, it's supposed to be tabled, but I don't know why. And I remember 2019, when they, when it came to us, it's five-zero approval from the Planning Commissioner and want us to approve. By that time, we don't have enough of information, so we want to get tabled, so get more information on the police and a lot of issue regarding from our planning manager.
Excuse me, can you please take your conversation outside? It's disruptive.
Okay, so, so anyway, so, so right now, last time, we asking about how many gas station we convenience store. We don't have the number, but this time we have. And plus, okay, plus, this time, we have all this detail regarding each city comparison with how many off-site license, okay? And for all this selling alcohol and how many gas station. So based on all this detailed information, that what we don't have in 2019. And we request the detail, this time, finally, we have comparison and detail. And plus, okay, we got the police information. Okay, so let's, how we can base on this and we vote with our conscience about what this is about. So we, if you go to see, based on number of site license, West Covina currently in San Gabriel Valley, the second biggest city, and we are more population than El Monte now, based on 2020 census, but look at El Monte has sixty-nine off-site, okay? And selling alcohol, and they only have a gas station license, okay, four. And Pasadena, eighty-five, and we, again, we forty-six. We are both same size, okay, or Pasadena, but they are hundred thirty-five, we are almost hundred twenty. So compared with that, the gas station is only six. So same thing, seem like Pasadena has a lot of gas station with convenience store, but not everybody want to apply. Okay, or they can, okay, approval. The approval is from the ABC. The approval is not from West Covina city. We don't, we don't have a jurisdiction to allow them to sell alcohol. We allow them to go to CUP and go to ABC, then apply, and approval with subject to ABC approval, based on the demographic, okay, and geographic about how many saturated and all the, all those information. Inspection is from the ABC, okay, Alcohol Beverage Control, not from the city. So anyway, so based on that, you can see, we are not in the highest number, thanks God. But at the same time, okay, they don't have a lot of gas station, okay, like tons of them selling beer and wine. So meaning they allow them to do it, so they still have to go to HouHub. So not everybody want to apply, but if they apply, they still have to go through very, very restricted, okay, approvals, okay, and process. So I think if we, okay, give all this, give them a chance to CUP, unless we give them a chance, it's nineteen seventy-four, nineteen seventy-seven, okay, like our old time resident Glenn Kennedy talking about the reason they set this ordinance, because that time's mayor has wanted monopolize about his selling, so that he doesn't allow, but I don't know true or not. But basically, this is a long time ago, okay? And all the gas station right now, it's all convenience store, okay? And huge, okay? It's like Seven Eleven, one next to the place I live, in the corner of Citrus, you have a Seven Eleven. And tell you the truth is, most of gas station in West Covina next door is a liquor store, okay? They have another liquor store just right on the corner, so people can, okay, do the same thing, okay, go into liquor store to buy anything they want. But what happened to the gas station with Seven Eleven? They basically don't have a chance to sell the basic beer and wine. They're not allowed to sell hard liquor because there's a Title Forty-seven, very difficult to obtain, okay? ABC won't give to you based on population. And the beer or wine is a little bit easier, but they still have a restriction. So in that way, the control is by the state government, it's not by our, our city jurisdiction, but we allow them, basically, it's a, it's a change of ordinance, allow them to apply based on the CUP. So I'm going to make a motion, okay? And, and I can make motion, he can still argue.
In the, in the public hearing at this time, we're supposed to be able to have discussion before motions are made.
And attorney?
You can, you can make a motion second, put the motion on the floor, and then deliberate.
Yeah, so I still.
You can make a substitute motion after that.
Yeah, I can still make a motion, and he can still argue, okay? And then, then if I get a second, then we go to vote. If I don't get a second, then you die. So, so I want to make a motion, basically, to, okay, allow the CUP for the gas station to sell, okay, beer and wine, but I have to go to the CUP. But I want to delete, no payphone should be permitted. I don't think we even have a payphone right now, so this is kind of ridiculous, okay? No payphone should be permitted on the, even what you want to request and do a payphone, they cannot even do it. So, so this one should be eliminate, okay? No coin operate, you just said already, like a video game that does not exist in the convenience store. And regarding 2000, okay, I think this should be give everybody a fair chance. It's basically, everybody can apply through ABC, a CUP and ABC. So meaning even our CUP is pretty strict, and then you have to go to ABC. The ABC get even more restricted per their information. We don't even have those information. ABC have those information regarding how saturated, how they approve it. So, so basically, and plus, I hundred percent agree with, okay, Councilman Cantos regarding a flood camera. So we need to put a condition, okay? And the CUP, they need to install, okay? And paid by the gas station owner to put a flood camera, okay? And with that, and paid by them, and centralized going to, okay, any other city and our dispatcher, so they can, okay, we get sent any stolen car, criminal, they with stolen car, want to commit crime in our city, okay? Their license will be scanned, so hopefully, we can prevent crime committed in our city. So basically, this is my motion, basically, okay? And allow them to go to CUP and go to ABC to apply, and delete, okay, no payphone thing, and delete the 2,000 square feet. Any convenience store, they all can applies through CUP, okay? And then, okay, with ABC. Okay, and they must install, okay, the flock camera. So, this is my motion. Go ahead.
Mayor Proton?
Yes, thank you. First off.
I'm sorry to interrupt one more time. If we have a motion, let's get a second, get that motion on the floor, and then we can discuss it.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So, first, as we're going to discuss this motion, on page one of the report, which I think everyone should have been familiar with, the last time this came up was 2020. And everyone who is here knows that all this information was available. I walked District One and discussed this from my public comment at least three times about this issue. So, it is concerning that we aren't recalling that conversation. At that time, District One is the district that is most concentrated with alcohol, and also has the, as we heard, Merced, where I do put my gas, and I do wash my car, at that Chevron, also has the most gas stations that could possibly have the beer and wine. So, that's, one concern is, I don't know how closely we read this report, because that's a mistake that shouldn't be made. Twenty twenty, former Councilman Lloyd Johnson is the one who did a Mother May I, and then it came before the council. So, that's to set that record straight. The next point to be made on this item is, we just recently put out a moratorium on drive-through restaurants. And so, I'm not seeing the consistency where we're saying, well, there is a process to go through to get these alcohol. Well, we had a process to go through to get a drive-through. And we said, as a council, no, we want to put a moratorium because of the health of the community, because we were worried about all the fast food and the concentration of fast food. Well, here, again, this motion is going to put, you know, add a concentration of alcohol. And we already have an ordinance in place, so this wouldn't actually require a change. It would just require us to continue with the way we have always gone. And I think that's the other piece, is that there has not been a community outcry for this ordinance to change. Again, every year, and I can understand from the business owner why they would want it, but it hasn't been called on by the community to change it. And so, again, I just, the rationale of this council in the past has been to either put moratoriums or make land use changes based on the health of the community. So, we've involved ourselves. We aren't this free-market competitive, you know, let's just open it up libertarian style. We had a developer who wanted to do a green development on Merced, wanted no gas, wanted to do full solar, full electric. That was the developer saying, we see a market for this, and this is what we want to sell. This council forced them to put gas, to put gas lines in their development. So, I think, again, you know, we're giving a rationale that doesn't match with the actions that this council has made in the past, right? This rationale that we want to give everyone a fair chance. We want, I think, a resident brought up the used car sales. We had a car dealership that had a deal with National, wanted to put a used car dealership there, which was every white. And what did we do? We changed the land use, so only allow for new cars there. We've done this. When Amazon wanted to come in, we changed the land use. So, again, because the rationale that's being used is not consistent what we've done as a council, I don't find it compelling. It doesn't match with our actions. And so, I'm totally against this motion. I think this idea too, to exchange surveillance for more alcohol, I don't find that as good policy, that we're going to allow increased alcohol sales when we do know that alcohol and increased alcohol use does cause more domestic violence, more violence. I mean, that is non-debatable. And so, to kind of make this argument, well, now we'll have more flock cameras, so it'll make us safer by selling more alcohol. It just is not a compelling argument, and I am completely against this motion for the change. And again, just a reminder, it was twenty twenty when this came before us, or not before me, I was not elected yet. But I was elected because it was brought up. I'll say that. Thank you.
Counselor woman?
A quick question. So, the fears that these residents have about alcohol selling at gas station, which is, you know, we have off-sale anyway, anyways, at different locations. If this does become an issue in the future, what can the city do? And this, I mean, I'm thinking this in general, that the, you know, applies to liquor stores and everything. I mean, just, I'm curious.
I think Joan can add to it, maybe Toni Cortina. But a conditional use permit has conditions of approval tied with it, and they don't comply with those conditions of approval, then we can revoke that CUP. Also, ABC license, if they're violating or not following the laws for selling alcohol off-sale, then that license, I believe, can also be revoked. If it becomes, I believe, like a nuisance to our community. But once again, the statistics, I don't know if Toni's still here or acting, Chief Cortina's still here. Getting the crime statistics for off-sale is a little bit trickier than on-sale as restaurants or bars. So, I don't know how we would tie it specifically to an off-sale location.
Well, off-site, I mean, in general, most people, when they purchase off-site, they, and if it's purchased as, you know, as a bulk, like mentioned, that they normally take it home, or take it to a party that they go to on their way. So, I know that, I mean, that's the reason why it's so, the percentage is low, instead of drinking at the bar. So, I don't mind that. And I just, so I just want it to be clear, so we can revoke. So, that's a good thing. So, you know, and I know people are going to ask my stance, and I've said it before, if you watched the last council meeting, you could hear everything that I've mentioned. But, you know, West Covina is known to be business-friendly. And for the past fifteen years, and I, you know, you only hear twenty twenty, but if you look at page one, it was initiated in two thousand eight. That being said, the same business has come multiple times. You have different years prior to me being in council. And I'm sure, even when I leave, if this gets voted down, it's still going to continue. That being said, because we are business-friendly, I do want to give it an opportunity for the business to allow this with restrictions and high standards. The proposed changes, those were, these changes were made by the planning commissioner, correct? Like, all these changes, like what?
It's a two thousand nineteen planning commissioner.
The standards are provided by the applicant. Is that what you're referring to?
No, the maximum, like maximum.
CUP.
CUP, you know, beer and wine displayed within five feet of cash register front, like the very details.
Okay, that's two thousand nineteen, five-zero, okay, planning commissioner approved, okay, with all this restriction. They including no, okay, have to be more than two thousand, okay? I was there, okay, so I know, okay? And that's how they want to, okay, and the payphone. And now, we still see the payphone, because that time, we always say, but again, that time, we table it. We want to, okay, planning and the police to give us more information and bring back to us. So, and that is, so this is from the two thousand nineteen, okay? And the vote, it's two thousand nineteen, before the election, okay? And that basically, okay, and that is how we table it.
Okay, yes. And I do recall that planning commissioner did thoroughly did their research, did bring a lot of things, because I did my research back then, and it went hand in hand, like I'm reading everything. And, you know, it does go hand in hand. And the stipulations and requirement and restrictions are at high standards, and I want to make sure it's kept that way to a high standard. As for the, you know, and I'm glad to see the installation, the CCT surveillance, that is very important, you know, with crime reduction and everything. And I could attest to that, you know, having, it just helps. Now, the flock camera, as everybody knows, that was my baby project, and I always love the camera. I wish, at my work, I had the flock camera. I mean, I just had recent two murders occur at my facility, and flock camera could easily, they had the vehicle, it's just the license plate. That being said, one of the stipulations I want to make sure is that if this does occur, the flock camera is mandated to be part of this. The flock camera and the CCTV, the flock camera does also deter. So, I know when people drive in, as soon as they notice that in certain areas of the city, they keep getting, you know, tagged, red flag, getting pulled over. It spreads. It spreads like wildfire, and they'll say, do not go at that area. And they tell friends, family, don't go in that area, if they're doing bad, obviously. So, that would be my stipulation in regards to this, if this motion passes.
I want to make correction, okay, Mayor Proton, Tabai Tabai is correct. Okay, this is twenty twenty, okay? Twenty twenty election, prior to twenty twenty election, we have the planning commissioner. So, yes, my mistake about two thousand nineteen, it's a twenty twenty, okay? Certainly, I remember. The election, we only can go to even number, so it's not two thousand.
Yeah, and, you know, it's like, again, to pass the CUP of the basic, to move forward on just this one step. Obviously, there's another process, another step that is out of our hands, which is the ABC, and I know that is difficult to get. That process requires a whole new, different requirement. And I do know that, you know, if there's an influx of alcohol sales in a certain area, ABC will not allow that. So, they have their requirements. So, though we may pass at this level, those, you know, gas stations that are restricted to only a certain areas will have to go through another hurdle. You know, high standards, I understand locations make a difference. I know the acting chief mentioned locations and so forth. That has a bearing, and I've seen it in different locations. And so, that being said, I would like to move this with the flock camera and having all that. Oh, yeah, you moved it first, I'm sorry.
So, I, okay, I will move, and, okay, and the Councilman Kento will wait a second, okay? But I want to follow really quickly about you just mentioned, okay? But if you see the graphic, the detail, okay? We, West Covina, forty-six, like I mentioned, okay, previously. Bowen Park, forty-nine, okay? Bowen Park is about sixty-five thousand population. They have a more, okay, number of side, okay, of sale license, okay? And El Monte, okay, similar, our population is sixty-nine, okay? And La Pointe is thirty-three, they only about forty thousand population. Pasadena, hundred thirty-five thousand, eighty-five. Warner, okay, about thirty-two, okay, thirty-four thousand, fourteen. But the issue is, if you go to gas station, did you see the little single digit? Little single digit. Even we have twenty convenience store, doesn't mean we are going to get twenty gas station selling beer and wine. Because if you see Pasadena eighty-five off-site sales, like, okay, license, but they only have six gas station in entire city. So, meaning, they are very restrictive from the ABC. I think I saw a lot of convenience store of gas station in Pasadena, but they only have six. And they allow them to go to the CUP and go to the ABC. So, for that, I think it's not like they want it, they can get it, okay? This, they have go to HouHub, okay? And we just allow them to go to CUP, okay? I've given a chance, and the number, okay, ABC, we're subject to ABC approval. So, let's, again, I'm trying to, okay, say this, we just allow them, okay, to apply, okay? And in that way, to be a fairness compared with all the city. So, I move the motion, and we have a second.
Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm enjoying the discussion. So, I guess, because we are having a discussion, I'd like to understand the difference between now we want to allow this, but we've placed a moratorium on drive-through restaurants. I guess I'm not understanding, so, yeah, Counselor Manuel, if you could speak to that.
Okay, the reason, if we go to, okay, the hearing last time.
Madam Mayor, let's stick to this topic of a man in New York.
Well, I'm trying to understand the rationale of the motion.
Okay, I want to quickly, because we have the most drive-through in our city, in San Gabriel Valley. We the number one, okay? And there's a reason. Right now, our gas station, look at, compared with them, we only have Pasadena in the same population. So, meaning, we are not highly saturated compared with the drive-through. Drive-through, we the number one, okay? And are we going to continue to have all the drive-through and to move our, okay, sit-in, okay, or sit-down diner? So, that is the thing, but it's only temporary moratorium, it's not forever. So, in that way, people still can apply later on, and we just want to see, can we digest the traffic? So, anyway, but now over here, look at, we offer forty-six, compared with Pasadena eighty-five, and El Monte sixty-nine, and the gas station, they only have three, seven, four, two, six, two, and we are zero. So, even we apply, I don't think we will hit a lot. But at least give people a chance.
Mayor Proton?
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so then, the rationale then is that the amount of liquor sales, liquor stores that we have, because it is not at the top mark, you think we should be able to have more. I guess, I'm asking for the health of the community. Is that what the community is asking for? I mean, we have forty-six. Forty-six seems to be a good number. Again, I have not had the community come to me and say, we don't have access to enough alcohol. And so, again, you know, to create the opportunity for more, when the idea is, well, we have too many drive-throughs, because we're number one. Okay, we're number one, and that becomes an issue. Why? Because, well, okay, so now, we're not number one in alcohol sales, but it's an issue because we're too low? I guess, again, I just don't understand the rationale when the community hasn't asked for it.
So, can I fill in? Because I think it's just so silly to correlate drive-throughs with gas station sales. So, I mean, for me, if you want to bring it to correlate it with that, then if the gas station is going to have a drive-through for alcohol sales, then of course, I'm going to say no too, because, I mean, it's the drive-through that goes all the way, that causes traffic. So, and that's, I mean, that's why I'm just saying that it's just.
That would make more sense.
And then, we don't have a high issue of alcohol issue sales here. Like, if you go to other cities that have, like, I don't even like liquor stores. I'd rather have it at a gas station, where you get the beer and alcohol there, than an actual physical liquor store that you see. Because cities that have tons of liquor stores, you know, okay, bad city, in generally speaking. So, in regards to drive-through and alcohol sales and everything, I just find it very silly. And it's not like, okay, we're pushing this for alcohol to go all the way high, increase alcohol sales. No, I mean, even right here on their list, the beer selling quantity is fewer than three containers prohibited, no alcohol beverage should be sold in unit quantities less than distributors intended resell units. They even put, no beer and wine shall be displayed within five feet of cash register or front door. The advertisement for beer and wine shall not be permitted at motor fuel islands. So, I mean, it's not, we're not promoting alcohol, go and drink alcohol. We're making it more convenient. And this is also for, you know, I've had to purchase things, and, you know, for, I'm not even a drinker. Like, you know, if my family comes over. Like, you know, if my family comes over, I don't have alcohol at home, okay, let me go get something, the stores are closed, you know, I'm having a reroute or whatever it is. It's the convenience of it. So, again, drive-throughs versus the, I just didn't find any correlation. I'm sorry, I just found it very silly. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Cantos?
Just for the record, for my part of this, the reason why I wanted to, this is, I was asking about the flock cameras is because that is a different part of this, all of this. I know from my own constituents that we, those who brought me into office are really wanting more public safety. And the flock cameras, in light of what the acting police chief said earlier, he said that the flock cameras significantly promote their ability to enforce the laws and therefore keep us more safe. And therefore, for me, it's a personal, it's a safety issue. It's not about access to alcohol, because anyone could go anywhere to get whatever alcohol they want from wherever. But this is an opportunity for us to allow or to facilitate more of an ability to enforce laws and to have more anti-crime prevention measures done in a way that doesn't impact the taxpayer, taxpayers of our city. Because the installation of all these cameras, I don't know how expensive these are, but whatever you, whatever they are, if they decide to apply for alcohol, to sell alcohol and they put these in as a condition, then you multiply that by the number of locations and that's a net savings to the taxpayer. And then on top of that, with the increased network of flock cameras more around the city, it isn't a surveillance state, but it actually, law enforcement has said that it actually helps them to do their job better. So that way, we don't have situations where people, we don't know the perpetrators of crime or we're not able to catch people as well. So to me, it just seems like the public safety issue is what is different from before. And I wasn't here before, but because public safety is a big priority for me, I wanted to find a way to maximize this as a way to promote greater public safety, just for the record.
And that goes the same for me in regards to safety in flock camera. For all we know, having the flock camera on CCTV, well, primarily a flock camera, it could even hurt their sales of business. So, again, I'm for safety and thank you, Councilman Cantos, in regards to the flock camera, because as most people know, when it comes to cameras, when it comes to safety, that is my number one priority. And again, I mean, I could continue to read these proposed changes, that, you know, alcohol is not the, you know, the prime focus of being sold to whatever it may be, it's allowing a business to be able to sell and allow this, just like the other businesses in surrounding cities. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor, for giving me the floor to speak. That is the Robert Rules of Order. So, just so, because it seems, Councilwoman Lopez Vialdo, you didn't understand what I was saying. The reason for the moratorium on the drive-throughs was because of saturation and because it was an unhealthy, unhealthy food item for the community. It made the community more unhealthy. Adding alcohol sales, adding more areas to purchase alcohol is also creating a more unhealthy community. And also, when you promote-
Mayor Protem, are we going to go somewhere with this?
Well, because I get to respond, I get to respond when, the way a discussion works, she-
That is related to the topic.
She spoke to me and she made comments on my, and then I get to rebut. And then afterwards, she can claim the floor, she can ask you for the floor. She didn't ask for the floor after Councilman Cantos, she spoke out of turn. I asked for the floor, you've now given me the floor. And so, I'd like to finish my comment.
Yeah, please do.
Point of order.
What's your point of order?
She's disrupting, not allowing.
Let's move forward.
Thank you. Okay, and then, to the point about promotion, while we're wanting to pass this for convenience, while if you're wanting to make something more convenient, you're making, you're wanting it to make it easier for people to purchase, easier for them to get. So that is the city promoting. So, again, the rationale of this council just does not fit with other items we've had in front of us. And so, again, that's where I see the hypocrisy and why I'm against this motion. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lopez Vialdo?
Thank you, Mayor. The saturation was not just the focus of unhealthy, it was the issue of people complaining when they're driving, that that drive-through affects the whole long line and that they can't get through. It causes frustration, you know, that's the saturation. And when we talked about that moratorium, we've also included to make sure that they have space so that they can do pickup. So we did continue to make it more convenient. But again, you know, sticking to the topic at hand, which is this, and not, you know, saturation of what you thought, making, linking, linking something that is not necessarily the same thing, it doesn't link, that's, again, I'm just going over, you're mentioning unhealthy, that was not the case of this whole saturation. Thank you.
We're done?
I mean, we can go on for an hour, but like, I'd like to stick to the topic and we could move forward. Thank you.
Roll call.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu and a second by Councilman Cantos to approve the proposed ordinance with the following exceptions, adding flock cameras as a condition of approval and removing the language regarding payphones. Councilman Cantos? Oh, excuse me.
And, okay, eliminate 2,000 square feet, let recall, yeah.
Sorry, if I may, that wasn't a part of the standards that was included, that was an option. So that's currently not in what's being proposed. Just wanted to clarify.
Councilman Cantos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu, I'm sorry, before roll call, I will read the title of the ordinance. Ordinance number 2515, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, to amend Chapter 26 of the West Covina Municipal Code to allow alcohol, beer and wine sales at service stations and finding the ordinance is exempt from environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, pursuant to CEQA Guidelines, Section 15061B3. Councilman Cantos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Vialdo?
Aye.
May I approach him, Tabai Tabai?
Just for clarification, so on the original, the original motion that was made, because there wasn't the call for all the gas stations, but in the original motion, it included all gas stations without the 2,000-square-foot requirement?
I believe the motion was to remove the 2,000-square-foot requirement.
Not in his original, he added it later. So that needs to be an amendment.
No, no, okay.
When the first motion was, when the first motion was seconded, it didn't have about the-
2,000 square-
Removing the 2,000, he's added it now, so that would be an amendment.
No, I didn't.
It's not in there. It's not.
Okay, so that's where my question, I was asking for clarification.
Yeah, it wasn't in there, anyway.
Okay, so it was never in there. Okay, perfect. Okay, so no.
Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Item passes 4-1, Mayor.
Okay, now we're going to move on to cost of services study. Ms. Morales, who's going to be giving us the staff report?
Mayor Diaz, Eric Johnson from Revenue and Cost Specialist will be presenting the report, and if you can just give us a little bit to change presentations.
All right. Thank you.
We have Mr. Johnson here, who is the consultant that the city of West Covina has hired to take a look at our user fees and determine if we're meeting our needs here in the city of what we should be charging or what we can charge for our fees. So Mr. Johnson's going to go ahead and do a presentation.
Thank you.
Everyone hear me okay? All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Eric Johnson. I'm glad to be here with you tonight with my partner, Rick Kermmer, over here to my left, to present to you the cost of services study. But before we do that, just want to give a quick overview about RCS. We were founded in 1980. We are the premier expert in user fee, cost allocation, impact fee studies. We've been doing this longer than anybody else has. We're a small professional company that relies on referrals, repeat business. All of our partners are former city employees. This is what we do and we have that city experience to go along with that and have been doing this. We have over 135 years of knowledge combined together, and we've done this in over 250 different agencies, mostly in California. This is a comprehensive study, so we looked at user fees, where there's identifiable user, cost for service, primarily development, construction fees, but also police, fire, recreation fees, administrative fees. We looked at certain rents that are more market set, such as facility rentals, and fines when it comes to municipal code violations or code enforcement violations. We did a cost allocation plan and administrative overhead as part of this. This is not for impact fees, which will be coming to you later. This is not in lieu fees, utility rates, grants or taxes, this is just fees and fines. So what have we done? We've recast the city budget with a business orientation. We did this because the voters told us to. In 1978, they passed Proposition 13, which limited property taxes. Then a year later, they passed Proposition 4, which said that fees that do not exceed the costs reasonably borne providing the service are not considered taxes. This was reinforced and limited in Prop 218 in later years and Prop 26 in 2010. They wanted government to act more like a business and know its cost. But while governmental accounting does a great job of tracking revenues and expenses at the fund, department and division level, it was never really designed to track revenues and costs at a service level. So we had to create that information. Working with staff, we identify what a cost provide the full business cost of services to your customers. So there is no city council service or city manager service. These costs, amongst others, are part of the overhead support cost. It's just like when you go to the store and you buy a can of corn. You know when you buy that can of corn that it includes the cost of the farmer and the distributor and the chucker in front of you at the grocery store. You know that. We've done that same thing here with the services that you're providing. We've identified the full business cost of providing services to your customers. As a business, you won't stay in business very long if you don't know this information. Also, you won't stay in business very long if you're not able to match up revenues with those costs. So we've done this also. For every fee service, we have identified the revenue and matched that up with the cost of providing the service. And this was a thorough process. We started with, we wanted to update the current fees, so we needed to identify what are the services you're providing. Working with staff, we added fees, we removed fees, we redefined fees. And of course, we want to make sure they're legally defensible, that they're not more than the cost reasonably borne, and confirm that there's revenue, that the revenue that's being collected with the current fee is being collected. And where there's some market demand fees, we talked about that with staff also. So how did we do this? Well, as I mentioned, we need to establish what's the service and what's the time spent. So we spent time with every department in the city, what are all the services you're providing? Identified staff time to those services, went over that again and again and again. Identified how many of these you're doing, so that we can look at, make sure that when we look at how much staff is being allocated, we're not allocating hours that don't exist, we're not overallocating staff. And so, to the extent that they're also doing other things other than providing these fee services, we identified that too. Whether it's providing administrative support within the department or to other departments, or providing other services to the customers that are more traditional tax services that we'll talk about in a little bit. But the important point is that we've allocated 100% of all city staff time to all the services that they're providing. We then need to calculate a fully burned hourly rate. So we looked at actual salaries, actual fringe benefits, we looked at what's budgeted for non-personnel expenses, we developed an overhead cost, so that's where the cost allocation plan comes in, where we allocated our cost to city council and city manager and finance and HR in a way that makes sense and is fair to the users of those services, other departments. We did the same thing for departmental overhead, within a department or sometimes within a division. So at the end of the day, we have a fully burdened hourly rate for every position in the city, a billing rate, a business rate for every position. We then matched that billing rate up with that time detail, and now we know what the cost of the service is. We sat down with staff again, we reviewed, here's the current fee, here's the cost, here's a fee to recover those costs, and sat down with staff and made sure that those recommendations, those proposed fees that are in front of you today are something that makes sense and are workable at the counter on an everyday basis. Which brings us here tonight, have the final report to present to the council and to the community, and we're here to assist as far as helping out going through that process. So as I mentioned, we looked at every service in the city, and there's what we call tax services versus fee services. Community-supported services versus personal choice services. Taxes are there to pay for community-supported services. These are things that typically benefit the community as a whole, they're 100% supported by tax dollars, and examples of this are police and fire and streets and parks. So when people say, "What do my tax dollars pay for?", this is what your tax dollars pay for. Personal choice services is where the customer is identifiable, service is measurable. Most importantly, it benefits an individual or a group and not the larger community. You can still decide to subsidize certain services, as long as you don't charge more than, other people more than what the costs are. So examples of personal choice services are development services that are typically not subsidized, and recreation services that typically are subsidized. And so I have this chart here where it matches up taxes with community-supported services. Taxes are there to support community-supported services. Fees and charges are there to support personal choice services. But to the extent that the fee does not cover the cost of providing the service, that money's got to come from somewhere. The costs are occurring, the services are being provided, so the only place it can come from are taxes. So through this process, we identified about $12.8 million in subsidy of personal choice services with tax dollars. Now, it's a big number, and I'm not going to sit here today and say, "If you adopt everything in this report, you'll get $12.8 million." Because that's not the case. So let's dive into the detail a little bit more. So we have this chart, which identifies, kind of groups together different types of services, development services, public safety services, community services and administrative services. Where we identify the total fee revenue based on the current fees today, the total cost based on what we calculated through this process. And then the difference, of course, is any profit or negative number there being a subsidy. So you see at the bottom there, the subtotal for subsidy, there you see that $12.8 million number. But if you look off to the far right, there's a possible new revenue number, and that number is far less. It totals 1.4 million dollars. Why is there such a big difference between that 12.8 and 1.4? Because there are certain things in here that although we identify as personal choice services, they're still going to be subsidized, either by the nature of the service or because, like, for community services, they're going to be things that you probably want to continue to subsidize. So let me walk through a couple of things in here. In the public safety area, things that we are asking to be continued to subsidize are fire and life safety inspections, we're recommending a 50% cost recovery, so there's a big difference there between the subsidy and the possible new revenue. False alarm response. If it's working well, you're not collecting any revenue. And so it's something that we're not projecting everywhere, any revenue. We're trying to be very conservative in our projected revenues here, so we don't over-project. Jail booking, we're suggesting an increase in the fee, but it's like getting the blood out of a stone sometimes, so we're not projecting additional revenue there. The big one is EMS services. EMS services has a fee and is designed to cover the cost of that response from door to door, and we've increased the fee to do that with these costs, but it doesn't cover all the other wait-time costs, all the other on-call costs, where they're not responding to a call, but they're there, ready to respond to a call. You're never going to, the fee is going to be astronomical. So there's a $8.5 million continued subsidy for EMS services. That's just the nature of the beast, it's nothing unusual here in West Covina. Code enforcement, another one that is, has fines, but you're not going to really increase your revenue. So again, we're trying to be conservative in our possible new revenue projections, and that's also why with community services, we didn't project any new revenue. We'll talk about this in a second, but community services are different. They're market-based fees, you can't just say, "Here's the cost, therefore, here's what we're going to charge." People won't come, you won't have a program. And we'll talk about that more in a second. So the report itself, let me just kind of quickly walk you through how the report is structured, because it's 569 pages. There's a lot of information in here. And I found out late this afternoon that there, we made some late fire department changes that did not get into this report. So it's, the report, the summary tables that are presented to you are correct, but the- you are correct, but the detail in Appendix A and B represent old information. I just sent that to Lisa late this afternoon, so she will forward that on to you and the community, if not tonight, tomorrow. So I apologize for that. Totally my fault.
Yes, I will get that out to you tomorrow morning and also please sit on our city's website. Thank you.
And so we have the table of contents at the beginning that talks you through the text. There's about 40 pages of text that explain a lot of what I talked about, but in a lot more detail. When you get to Chapter 3 of the report, pages 23 to 33, it has that same level, those same columns we were just looking at that were summarized by type of service, community development, public safety. Now it identifies each individual service. So on those summary tables, you'll see S001, additional planning application review, S002, administrative review, all the total revenue, total cost, total subsidies for each individual Appendix A is where the juicy stuff starts to happen. Current fee and proposed fee side by side for all of the, I forgot to look, over 200 different services that we identified in here where you can see side by side. You'll see those same reference numbers, S numbers that kind of follows through from that summary table in Chapter 3 to Appendix A and follows through to Appendix B, where for every service, there'll be these two matching, oops, two matching pages. Let me make this a little bigger. And so for every service, you'll have a description of the service on the left-hand side. Below that, the fee that the city is currently charging. Below that, a revenue and cost comparison, both on a per-unit basis and a total or annual basis. The cost coming from the right-hand page, so you can see all the staff that's involved in that service. So here we have a police lieutenant spending 15 minutes, .25, on each service, .25 of police lieutenant, fully burdened, all the overheads, everything, $52.50. There are six of these a year, therefore the annual cost is $315. And then same thing for each position below that. So you can see who's involved and how much time is involved in each service that's in here. And that gives you your total per-unit cost and your total annual cost. And so then when we go back over here to the lower left, there'll be a fee recommendation to recover in most cases 100% of those costs. So there's that level of detail for every service. So if you're starting in Chapter 3 and you're looking at some numbers there that, gosh, this seems really high or something, you can go to Appendix A, that same S number, and see, okay, it's going from this fee to that fee. Why is that fee so high? Well, then you go to Appendix B, find that same S number, and you can see what makes up that detail and why those costs are what they are. And as I mentioned, recreation's different, and so we treat it differently. We look at it differently. We don't come in and just say, here's a whole new set of fees to recover these costs. There's a whole lot more that goes into it. There's the market that goes into it. There's what the council and the community want to subsidize or not subsidize. So there's a whole lot more discussion. So what we're presenting here in Appendix C at the very back of the report is, what are the direct costs of the program? And think about what is the cost recovery when we're looking at the direct cost. So we've presented for the various different services, everything from daycare to contract classes to senior meals to facility operations and sports flex. Off to the right here, you can see the revenues and what the percent is, what percent recovery of those direct costs. Now, that doesn't include facility costs, which are down below here at the bottom, and that doesn't include overhead costs, which are down at the bottom. They're still occurring. They're still real cost. But if you think about this as not setting fees for recreation, but setting goals, we want this program to recover X percent, or we want youth to recover X percent, or we want the division as a whole to recover X percent. If you look at it as direct cost, that's a more meaningful number to update from year to year, for them to come back to you year to year and say, here's how we're doing with your goals, without having to recalculate overheads. They know what their direct costs are. They know what the cost of their part-time and their supplies and all that. And so think about recreation in those terms instead of in specific fees. And hopefully, we can have a larger discussion just talking about recreation and community services as part of this process because it is different than all the other fees, and we should not look at it in the same way. So our goal was to identify the full cost for the various services, and we think we've done that. We and city staff together have made fee recommendations for every service that we feel either has a fee or could make sense as a fee service. It's now up to the council to decide which services should be charged the full cost and which services should be subsidized with tax dollars. Because the costs are occurring, services are being provided. The question now is, who's going to pay for it? The taxpayer or the person or group receiving the service? And that concludes our presentation.
If I could just add a couple things, Mayor. So tonight, the presentation, the report, is just to receive and file. We are then going to be hosting, as I mentioned earlier, two community meetings or workshops, and then we will be coming back to you to go over those comments from the community and then, whether line by line or go through the fees that you would like to increase or fees that you would, like, as the consultant mentioned, the percentages of the return on those fees. So tonight's just receive and file.
And to set the public hearing. Thank you, Lisa. The other thing I did want to note is that the, this is a result from our 2020 state audit, that one of the findings was that we were not charging enough fees to recoup our cost, and so that was one of the findings, and this is in response to that 2020 state audit. And they suggested that every three years, we reassess our fees, and I think the last time that we did it was in 2017. So just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Okay, so do we need a...
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Kontos?
What is, how does this intersect with, let's say, we have goals for capital improvement, we have a whole list of things that we want to do. Is there a way that we could leverage this process to figure out what opportunities there are to assess different costs in a way that would enable us to undertake payment for those projects, but in a way that's fair and doesn't really burden the community? I mean, it's a loaded question, but I just keep thinking about so many things that we want on the capital improvement side and on the maintenance side to make sure that we don't pay for things until they fully, fully break. But how does that, how do those priorities intersect with the assessment here of costs and possible revenue sources?
I'll go ahead and try that. I think really the only way that I see it being a benefit in that way is you're freeing up, if every recommendation in this report were undertaken, we think you're going to get about $1.4 million in additional annual revenue that right now is being paid for with taxes. And so that frees up about $1.4 million in tax dollars that you can use for CIP programs, that you can use for police or fire or maintenance. So it gives you a little extra leverage on that way, if that answers your question.
Oh, okay. I see. Thank you.
Councilman Wu?
So, so basically, we want to fee schedule, okay, survey. So like, including, for example, business license fee, okay, or, okay, how to rent the park. Am I right?
Yes, you're correct.
So basically, we want to check everything about the fee that service rented. For example, they want to book our community room, how much do people have to pay, and how much we pay right now, and what is a sufficient amount, right? Am I right? That's why you survey to find out how much, for example, I don't know how much we ran out for the, for the, for the, okay, Cameron Park?
Or the pavilions.
Or Senior Center, okay? And the Senior Center have a two-part, they have another east side. So if I want to rent a room for some activity, so you survey, what is the charge, what justify the current, other city or this and that?
Yeah, that is going to be an instance where a survey of like facilities is what you're going to want to do, because it's a rental of a city asset, you're not limited to cost. You can charge whatever the market will pay for that room for that hour. And so that's where surveys will definitely be helpful when it comes to talking about room rental fees.
So when you say, when we charge the fee, we are far away, okay, from our, okay, so which area that we are lack of, what should be charged by our, okay, seat resident or people want to get some service? Could you give me an example? What kind of fee?
Planning fees. Think of a conditional use permit we were talking about tonight, or an encroachment permit, or an annual fire permit, all of those, or...
So you're talking about the permit fee?
Yes.
Okay. It's that we already done it a couple years ago to update the fee, okay, and we already increased. So when you talk about, you're talking about plan check fee or...
For planning and for fire.
Fire?
Right. So think of all the planning application fees, anything from a general plan amendment to a precise plan of design.
I understand running a government to provide service, it costs a lot of money and the staff time, this and that. But at the same time, I really worry about burden people to pay more, okay, and why is justification for to increasing the fee and not, nobody want to, okay, come to our city to do development or something if we become so expensive?
Well, there...
They don't want to become another Pasadena, okay, so we want to be friendlier and cheaper.
But people still develop in Pasadena. People develop where they develop because they want to be there or they own property there.
Quite true, yeah.
So the fees that we're talking about here, people are not developing or not developing based on an extra a few hundred dollars or even a few thousand dollars, unlike capital impact fees, which may have more of an impact. So...
Yeah, you're right.
Right. And so...
The time is money. If we can give them, okay, and, okay, timely matter to provide, and the time is mattered, they willing to pay additional more, okay, rather than dragging over there for so many months. So I think the service issue and that is what most of the builder care the most.
Exactly.
Time is the money. You're out of time, you're out of the timing, then you're out of luck.
Yes.
Yeah. So you basically, you survey how much charge compared, the comparison, then you will bring to us for approval?
We're looking at what it costs to do service, to provide the service here. We didn't look at what it costs in other cities because we don't feel that that is something that moves the needle, is something that, because people aren't developing based on whether it's $500 more in Covina versus West Covina, they're developing based on a whole bunch of, you know, what's, where's their market, where's their customers, where's their property. And so based on that, we're saying, here's the cost of providing your service. Now we're asking, who should pay for it? Should it be the person receiving the service, or the taxpayer, or some combination of those? And that's the questions that we're asking you as a council.
Is this have to go to the community outreach, or this is just, you do the survey and you bring back to us? You have to do the community outreach, right? You have to do the community outreach? Excuse me?
I think that's the plan.
We are doing two community meetings with the public, yes.
Good. Okay, that's my question. Okay, so because we, any fee increase, we better to go to the people, have them to, okay, notification, discussion, okay, and they understand what city planning to do. I just don't want to be a, try to gouge people thing, okay, as we see, sitting over here, but at the same time, okay, everything become expensive. We don't want to create another inflation for our resident because we want to increase the thing, but we just want to make sure we can mix and meet, okay, so we don't want to be a deficit. Okay, so, okay, so you will do community outreach, and then you will survey the number and bring back to council to review and for approval?
By survey the numbers, we will not survey with surrounding cities, no. We surveyed here in the city of West Covina.
Of course.
Yes, so that has been done. Yes, that's the report.
So if I can clarify a little bit, so for example, if an applicant applies for conditional use...
So you have two community outreach already?
No, 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 we will. We first brought it to you this evening before...
I'm kind of lost my mind, right? With a beer and wine. I haven't drank it, but I was drunk. Okay, so yes, to talk too much about that. So we have some survey, we're going to bring it to them, but, okay, got it.
You're going to do community workshops.
Workshop.
We'll get community feedback.
And, and, I got it. And when will come back to us?
October 3rd will be the public hearing.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Can you give me those dates again, that you're going to have this community?
It is, if you can give me a second. Oh, August 28th and September 6th, both at 6:00. The first one's going to be here at City Hall, and the second one's going to be at Cameron Community Park. Both will be at 6:00 PM. The information will be available on our website.
Okay, so now this is just receipt and file, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Move the motion to receive and file.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu and a second by Councilman Kontos. Councilman Kontos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Tabatabai?
Real quick, just, because this is a lot of information, so this is, how accessible is this going to be to the community? Because they're going to need time to go through all the different fees and figure out which ones they're okay with the city subsidizing.
It'll be available on our website tomorrow, and we will promote that it's available on our website. So there will be promotion, and it'll be, like I said, available tomorrow.
Okay. And is it going to be in the same form that we got? I think it's like 500 pages?
It's the only form we have. Yeah, so it'll be available, and we'll also include the PowerPoint presentation.
Yeah, okay. I think, so just for residents, pages 23 through 33, would that probably be what they, like, if they'd only had time, and then you're like, hey, look at these 10 pages?
Yeah, Chapter 3, pages 23 to 33.
Would be most beneficial, probably.
A good place to start.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'll also have a copy of it in my office.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Aye, by the way.
And that was a yes. Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Item passes 5-0, Mayor.
Okay, now let's move on to item eight.
Second to last.
Consideration of designation of voting. Who's going to be giving the staff report?
It's just, we need to delegate, appoint a representative to the League of California Cities. They are having their annual conference next month, and so if we can get a representative and then alternative.
Mayor Wu.
Mayor Wu, okay, I've been promoted.
Councilman Wu, I'm sorry, it's late.
Thank you so much.
A lot of alcohol and wine and...
Just talking, just talking, we're already drunk.
Sorry.
Okay, so we have a band of alcohol. Okay, so anyway, I want to make a motion to nominate, okay, our Mayor Diaz, okay, since she's going to League of City as our voting representative. And then I know, okay, and Councilman Kento will be there too, so, okay, he will be the alternate. This is my motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu to appoint Mayor Diaz as the voting delegate and Councilmember Kontos as the alternate delegate, and a second by Councilman, excuse me, by Mayor Protim Tabatabai. Councilman Kontos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Tabatabai?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor. Item passes 5-0.
Thank you. Let's move on to item number nine. Consideration of transit options and transportation and lease agreement with MB Transportation, Inc. Who will given, who will be giving a staff report?
Kelly McDonald will be providing the presentation.
Good evening. This matter concerns improvement options to the city's public service, public transit service, specifically the fixed route shuttle system, and secondarily, the dial-a-ride. Currently, the fixed route consists of three different alignments, the red, green, and blue lines. The red and blue run, or all the lines run Monday through Friday. There are four dedicated vehicles plus a standby. The red and blue each operate with a single vehicle in one direction with a one-hour headway. That's the time to complete the loop. The green line runs with two vehicles, each in an opposite direction, with a half-hour headway, and the dial-a-ride operates with four vehicles plus a standby. This is, this image is the current, current alignments. Now, both modes of service have experienced a decline in overall ridership. The trend's not unique to West Covina in general. General public service use, public transit usage has been declining. This table shows the reported bus boardings by neighboring agencies for the years 2016 and 2020. The five-year, the, each year of the five-year period is included in your report, and you can see the, the difference, the decline over this period. The pandemic impacted the last quarter of 2020, but the trends were already there. This is the same information by agency and timeframe for the dial-a-ride. The declines were there, but not as significant as the bus, buses. This graphic shows the trend lines for the Go West ridership over the past seven years. West Covina numbers for 2022 showed a slight bump, recovering slightly, but not to the pre-pandemic level. And when you see this trend in ridership, you need to consider the cost efficiency of delivering the service, the very, particularly with the fixed route. The variable part of the total cost of service is the revenue hour, that's the number of hours in which a vehicle is in service picking up and dropping off riders, and revenue hours fluctuate with rider use on the demand, on the demand-based dial-a-ride service. This isn't the case with the fixed route as it's fixed, and whether or not there is demand, those buses are running and not having riders hurts the cost efficiency. That's evident on this, this next graphic, which shows the boardings for the Go West by alignment for the past fiscal year, the total boardings, monthly and daily average, the revenue hours by day, which are static, and the boardings per revenue hour and cost per boarding, with the total, total fixed and variable costs. So what really stands out is a red and blue line doing about 10 and 15 daily on average, and one and a half or one person per revenue hour at a cost of about $58 to $84 per boarding. So the decline in ridership and the need to procure a new contract prompted an evaluation of the city's transit services. IBI Group has contracted to do this evaluation and analyze the existing conditions, conducting a number of community surveys, as well as virtual and in-person town halls to assess the current transit system and get people's opinion of that. In the initial survey, there garnered approximately 550 responses, the top three improvements response, respondents expressed interest in were, one, an on-demand ride hailing service, two, better information on how to use the Go West Shuttle Service, and three, a mobile phone app with real-time information. Of those that used the Go West Services, more than 80% of the respondents were satisfied with the service, and 87% felt it was easy to use. Those who didn't use the service indicated, as their top reasons, that, one, they didn't know which bus to use, two, it takes too long, and three, the line isn't close enough to where they live or where they want to go. Another key takeaway from the survey was that 93% of the respondents had a car or access to one. So based on all this input, IBI developed alternatives, presented them, and refined, made refinements on those, and from those alternatives, went out and did, did some surveying, town halls to, and reached out to school districts to get feedback on those alternatives. To get into the alternatives briefly, the first was to replace the red and blue loops with a new east-west cross-town route. It was a more of a linear alignment and a two-way operation with vehicles on it and cutting the wait time in half. Also, part of that realignment would be the reconfiguration of the green line, which would continue to run north and south with two vehicles on it, but the northern terminus would be the Plaza West Covina, where it is currently the senior center. This is the, two, two routes that are proposed, a combination of the realignment with the connection being at the Plaza West Covina. The second option was a, a mix of, mix of services, it would keep the, the newly proposed red line, as previously shown, and south of Cameron and east of Glendora and down to the southern limit would replace the green line with an on-demand alternative, and this would allow for direct travel anywhere in that service area. And on-demand service could be provided through a number of different ways, microtransit, which we'll talk about in a bit, and TNC, which is a transit network company, such as Uber or Lyft, or a taxi company, or a blend of any of these services. A challenge we found with the on-demand options, though, is there is an age requirement for folks who would be riding unaccompanied. Microtransit riders must be 13 years and older to ride unaccompanied, and Uber and Lyft both have 18-year and over restrictions. Uber's launched a pilot, called Uber for Teens, that would allow teen, youth 13 to 17 to ride alone. This is live in some cities in 30 states, but none of those happen to be in California, and it, my assessment, or my feeling is that it's going to be a while before it rolls out. Third option is to replace the fixed route entirely with an on-demand alternative. I mentioned microtransit, and microtransit is, is an option that's characterized by a few aspects. Vehicles are generally smaller in size, passenger vans, mini buses, provide shared rides, curb-to-curb or point-to-point service, and typically, the, or the strong point of it is it's technology-enabled. They're not, it's not operated on a fixed route. Demand comes in through, through ride requests from a mobile app, a browser, a phone center, and software algorithms create the, create the routing, most, and hopefully, it's the most efficient routing, and so that's the gain. There are three potential service strategies that could be employed by, for West Covina microtransit services, those are discussed more fully in the report. The first is a turnkey, a transportation as a service, and that would be the preferred approach if that was the alternative. In March 20, March 2023, the city was approached by VIA, who's a software and microtransit provider, to cooperatively develop a grant proposal to Metro's visionary seed fund program, and the grant proposal was to launch a pilot turnkey microtransit program. Based on its analysis, VIA suggested the proposed pilot be in the northern portion of the city. This, you know, is in contrast with what IBI had recommended, but was consistent with what we saw in terms of our ridership, and Metro expects to award proposals this summer, and if the proposal's successful, the grant would require a 40% match. I mentioned in the report that hadn't heard anything to this point, but yesterday I was contacted by Metro and let, was advised that we're still, we're still in it, and they anticipate making some announcements at the end of September, early October, and taking that to their board, but they're continuing to evaluate the proposals. So with those alternatives, we went out to the community, or IBI, and did, and we had a community surveys, virtual town halls. We had 67 responses to our survey, and this is kind of the breakdown, 56% preferred the realignment, 33% preferred the citywide on-demand, and 11% like the mix. The second table shows...
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
When you say, "community feedback," how many community member, they give us, give you the feedback? It's like 20 people or 200 people?
67 responses in this particular...
67 people?
Correct.
To respond to the, so out of 56% of the 67 people, they want to realignment of the route?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And below that in the second table are some of the comments, the pros and cons that people responded with when we asked them about the alternatives, what, what they liked about a particular align, alternative, and what they didn't like, realignment being that the folks who liked that had good access to it, they liked the second bus in the opposite direction. Folks who didn't like it were concerned about wait time and poor access to their desired locations. The citywide on-demand folks liked the direct service to all areas, and others were concerned about arranging, arranging each ride and preferring larger vehicles and being concerned with being on time. And folks who favored the, the mix cited variety as a positive, but also those who didn't favor it thought the areas were confusing, the, the two different service areas being confusing, or not living in an area of a preferred service mode. At this point, just want to interject that the dial-a-ride is a service, while talking primarily about the fixed route, the dial-a-ride service is something that we need to continue to offer to comply with civil rights and ADA laws to, to continue to offer equal access to public services, so just do want to mention that. We did take the, take the survey, or we developed a survey specifically for high school students, and were able to work with the districts to get the online survey forwarded through the district personnel, because they wouldn't let us do that directly, but, which is fine. We, we had 187 responses through the districts, and this first table shows the responses regarding travel to and from school, where respondents were able to select up to two responses. You can see the overwhelming, overwhelming number is folks who are dropped off, then secondly, folks who walk or drive alone or with passengers. We asked if they would consider riding the Go West Shuttle if convenient, and 125 responded that they would, and 40 others responded that they would not, and these are some, this is more information from the student survey of the potential improvements that would encourage you to ride on the Go West Shuttle, what would they be? And the top three were a mobile app with real-time information. Next was a better information on the Go West Shuttle, and the third was a lower fee. And of the three alternatives, 46 preferred the realignment, 41 preferred the on-demand, and 26 preferred the mix, and the balance of folks skip, skip the question. When we reached out to the districts and talked to the district personnel, West Covina Unified was concerned in looking at the alternatives and the realignment of the lines. They were concerned about the elimination of the blue line, which services the northwest portion of the city and students who are potentially live in that area. They also had a preference for a, a shuttle versus a microtransit service, concerned about potential congestion at the maybe bell times.
And Kelly, a quick question, so when the West Covina Unified have an issue about the route, have, how many their student are taking this route? Do they tell you? Because they can complain, but they have to tell us how many student, how many, okay, so we can utilize the service, okay, to, and I think the, the reason is how we, okay, accommodate the student, okay, a lot of student have to walk home, or they can take the Go West or, or, okay, foothill transit, so we need to provide some of the student for them to take the, okay, mass transit?
Right. No, they didn't provide that information, but the ridership on the line is pretty low, you know?
Very low.
Yes, 10 or 15.
They have a problem with the route, but they very low to taking, okay, this ride.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Let's see, Covina Valley Unified had expressed concern that the realignment would not serve Covina High School as it, as it currently does, and it misses the South Hills High.
Again, same question about the Covina Valley Unified, did they tell you how many student are utilizing this route?
No, they did not.
This, again, so West Covina Unified didn't tell us, Covina Valley Unified, it didn't tell us either?
Right, and there's low ridership on that line, again, that's one of the, the two lines, the 10...
So how, how can they have a concern if they don't even know how many student taking their ride? We want to provide for the student, okay, if convenient, if parent cannot pick them up, they can take the, okay, and the transit to go to it, go home, okay, so they can go to the school, right? So, but they need to provide the information, the ridership, how many, that we try to accommodate. This is some, last time we asked, ask school to participate, but they need to provide us the genuine information about how many student need that ride, and how we can accommodate for those kid. But they didn't provide the numbers.
No, and those are relatively low numbers, daily average on both of those lines.
Low number, when you say low, low number, how low is the low?
Average, average is 10 or 15 on those particular lines.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And when, when we reached out to the schools, we just asked them what they thought of the, of the, the realignment, and if, if they could, you know, make a suggestion, what would it be, and that would be to capture their schools, and so that's, I guess they weren't saying they were getting hurt negatively, but they were just concerned about service for, for folks who may live in those areas. South Hills is missed altogether, and so there, there is no ridership, and so the superintendent has said, well, maybe if you swung that line out a little further, you would have ridership and be able to serve that, that high school, so...
I'm sorry, when you say extend it more, how far for the extension?
Well, well, currently, it's the green line, she was looking at the green line specifically, and where it goes down Citrus, and maybe swing that over to Berenca from Cortez, take, continue on Cortez and go south on Berenca and come down Cameron. So it would just be another major block, I think. But that, that was just something to consider, that was just a comment that was provided when we asked for their feedback.
And I know they have a bus stop at the Berenca, and they have a bus stop on Citra across street of Cortez. I think that one is for foothill transit, okay, I don't know, that is for the Go West.
Must be foothill transit.
Correct, and the Berencas too, they have another bus stop on the, on Berenca, so Berenca, Citra all have a bus stop, okay, so, so how we using the bus stop to, okay, work with Go West? They want to create a route, right?
Right. Well, the, the district's feedback to us was just saying, if, if you could, maybe you can extend that line out to Berenca from Citrus. And so this table summarizes the key aspects of these, these various alternatives, the fixed route, microtransit, and transit network company, the vehicle routing, access to service booking a ride, availability and operating hours, and the age to ride unaccompanied, the billing, other, other associated costs and branding opportunities. And the purpose of this report is, is for the consideration of options of services and to give, give us staff direction, we're seeking direction regarding a preferred transit option, so we can initiate a procurement process, which may be a, one or a mix of these alternatives, and obviously, the status quo is an option as well. The council directional serve as a basis for a scope of work for a request for proposals for transit services. The process to develop the specs and request for, and evaluate a pro, proposals, award contract and phase in and launch the service is expected to take up to a year depending upon the option, and as the current agreements with MB Transit are set to expire on September 2nd, further extensions of the agreements with MB Transit are needed to continue the shuttle and dial-a-ride services to the residents. MB has provided a cost proposal for status quo service that's included as attachment one, and it represents a 4.7% increase from the current year. There's sufficient funding included in the approved 2324 budget, there's no general fund impact, there is a termination of the agreement by either party with a 30-day notice and... There is a termination of the agreement by either party with a 30-day notice and so staff is requesting the approval of those extensions as well. So that concludes my report and I'm happy to answer questions.
Anyone have any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Mayor Protem? Oh, I'm sorry, he wants me to call on you. Councilman Cantos?
Kelly, if ridership is relatively low, is there a way, what would, would there be a way that we could proceed forward with with micro transit as a more efficient and efficient way of providing service or would there need to be an interim step of doing a more comprehensive review and just, and giving you more time to do that while continuing the current contract?
To improve the ridership?
To basically not have empty buses driving around. My predecessor really was a pet peeve of his and it is for me too, where we don't want to just have buses driving empty all around town, but at the same time, we also want to make sure not to have no transportation options. So what would be the best way to move forward in a way that will provide residents with the transportation they need, but with, while minimizing the unnecessary expenditures associated with driving around, driving buses around that are mostly empty?
Well, we've, we can continue to evaluate the downtimes and maybe discontinue those those routes. We've done that in the past couple of years, discontinued a couple of times that were very, very low. That's a possibility, but striving that, driving the ridership up, it seems to be, seems to be difficult. Our shelters are in bad shapes and we need signage and so forth to show those things. But I'm not sure that we can bring up the ridership in a fixed route sort of situation, which is why we're proposing some of these alternatives to potentially launch pilot programs and see if that helps.
So would there be a way that we could eliminate the two lowest, the two routes with the lowest riderships of 2 and 3,000 and then take those costs and then dedicate those to micro transit for those areas so that way the people who would have used those service, would have used the fixed routes that are now gone could now have access to that micro transit?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
So from the survey, it seems that the, just the culture of the community is they drive on their own, that people really aren't using the public transit. So whatever public transit we do provide is really always going to have a small ridership. Would you say that's true?
Potentially. I think there's a strong case to be made for that. There's a SKAG study a couple of years ago talking about ridership and coming to that conclusion that because of the cars and the relative, the car ownership, the explosion in car ownership and the relatively cheap gas that folks were opting to drive, drive alone. So, and there was some concern, I think one of the citizens had raised in the town hall that he didn't think that ridership would be affected by a change in the type of thing that was offered, the mode that was offered.
Right. Because I think my concern with Uber and Lyft and micro transit, because I know we had the program for the older riders and we even lowered, do we have new numbers after we made the changes?
Yes, yes. We haven't provided those. Those were going to come in a separate report tonight, but that's going to come on the 5th. I can tell you that we're now at about 85 in terms of participants, which is about doubled and we've done about 740 rides and spent about $5,500.
Right, right. So just because the numbers are so low, you know, I think to increase traffic with micro transit or Uber and Lyft, when people aren't really using it anyway, so you have people deadheading right around the town versus, you know, I understand the empty buses, but the buses do serve a small population. So, okay, that was kind of my thinking. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember?
No, I think ridership going downhill is happen to all the mass transits, including the metro, full-hill and the Go West, okay? Just people just don't feel comfortable to ride, okay? So together or to the place or to people they don't know, especially we went through the COVID, okay, and that kind of career, a lot of people just don't want to, in the confinement, okay, and to share with some people they don't know. So that possible is the issue, the ridership and the convenience about, okay, to go to any places and when they going show up, when the full-hill transit show up. But people still taking the buses, people taking buses. So how we accommodate a small population, the senior or some people don't have a driver license or their driver license, because DUI they get revoked, okay? So they have to take buses. I know somebody didn't, okay, have that, okay, more than one, okay? So they have to take buses. So we want to accommodate those person cannot drive or cannot drive temporarily or forever. So how we accommodate those people? So I think, and I have, I think somebody sent me information, okay, and I think, okay, one of the school board member from Simon Wright, he sent me about the information regarding, I think I sent to the city, acting city manager to review it about San Gabriel Ride, okay? So they share ride, okay? So they, okay, and then that's one of the city, San Gabriel city, okay, that do San Gabriel Ride, okay? And then they have, it's a shared ride, but a smaller car. Okay, so this is one thing. And another thing, your city, Monrovia, right? Okay, and they do what? They do Lyft.
Yeah, it's my city's West Covina, where I live. Yeah, it's a program where the cities, the rider pays up to $3 and the city subsidizes the, up to a certain amount, I believe it's $20. And within the city boundaries, you can go within the city boundaries for that $3 fare ride.
So I know last time I have a Monrovia, okay, city mayor, okay, becky to provide me all the information regarding, and he say they're doing it, but they're going to come, they have some positives, some negatives. So nothing's perfect, okay? So how we can, okay, do the best, okay, and to avoid, okay, the empty buses, I saw it too, running around, running around, but nobody inside the castle, inside the van. So how can we do something, actually, we align, okay, the route, where there be, but the school doesn't provide us how many people, how many student, what the more detailed information, they say we don't like it, maybe you do this and that, but where is the data, where's the information to provide for we can redesign so their student can utilize to use? So again, not when you're 16, 17, now everybody drive and now everybody can afford it to another car for the kid to drive. So we need to see how can we accommodate on the Longgalls High School, West Covina High School and, okay, and South Hill High School, okay? And, okay, we said another one next to West Covina High, Edgewood, Edgewood High School. So the kid, okay, because they have a lot of, a lot of kid. So how we design? So, so today, what you want to do, because this is freaking a lot of information, okay? It's like you have a three heavy-duty information and my brain's going to explode, okay? And so just for all these three, because the previous one is already heavy-duty, now you got this one and then we just have a one beer and wine. So, so we don't know all this information can really digest to choose the right route. So, so, so I don't know, maybe, okay, the operator can share with us what their suggestion so we can give you maybe a one-year extension so we can continue to work on it. We're not going to totally abandon you, but we want to find a way, which way will be utilized. This is, I don't know, it's not from general fund, but this still is taxpayers' money to utilize for people to use, okay? I think you feel bad to driving empty buses all the places too. So, so you want to come up to, can we invite them to say something? Yes or no? Okay, yeah, go ahead.
I have a quick question. I know we talked about increasing ridership. I wanted to know if, do you provide?
Can we come up, come up, yes, come up, come up.
Do you provide passes, for example, like our, like our summer camp? Sometimes we do the metro, metro comes out, they do a presentation and then they give us, they give each child the pass and then they could refill with their parents and so forth. Do we provide anything like this to the community?
I'm not aware. Go ahead.
So we do provide summer camp specials. We've been doing them all summer.
You put the mic, sorry.
We've been doing them all summer. We pick up anywhere from 10 to 20 to even 30 kids with some adults and we transfer them to, we take them to the movies, to parks, to different events like that. We don't provide passes, but we just transport the group.
Do they pay for that or is there a special?
No.
Is that even promoted? Because I've never heard of that.
It's done through the senior center. It's something that we just do with the city.
That's, I'm sorry, that's done through the daycare programs?
Daycare program.
So, but so for, oh, just for the daycare? So if, this is throughout the whole city, I mean, city of West Covina for all their participants or program? I mean, I'm just figuring, you know, when we have like our sports, I mean, that's, that's a key element there, where they do need transportation as groups, you know, any program participants and stuff. So is this even offered like to the schools? You know, I don't know if our buses are much cheaper than the school buses, you know, something to improve ridership that can be implemented. I see heads moving there, so I don't know if you have answers or?
We do have a recreation transit program and we do offer subsidized rides. I think seniors take buses, charter buses to the casinos and take other trips like that. The, let's see, the daycare, part of the daycare programs, we use the, use the shuttles to transport the kids within, within town and we have made shuttles available for different community organizations.
Oh, okay. I see, I wasn't aware.
I could also add, we've been using them as well for events like the Fourth of July.
That's true, yeah.
I want to continue.
Councilmember?
Okay, so, so the reason I bring you up is you guys know West Covina, you operate West Covina for a long time, okay? And I want to say, okay, couple of event, for example, July 4th, we have your buses coming in and then pick people up and then, okay, send people back to the, okay, the location and that is beautiful, okay? I think this is, nobody complain, everybody happy, okay? And we don't have a fight in the bus, right? So look at everybody, very civilized. So I think this is something, we need some of the, this kind of service, okay? And so, but how can we work together? Okay, you guys find a route and so we don't have a waste of gas and pollution and then we have nobody inside the car. So, so do you have any suggestion? Because so many route and it's so confusing for, we're not professional, okay? We part-timer and now we sit over here trying to decide the future of the route, it's just too scary, but we don't want to make a mistake. At the same time, I think it's a working process. We work and we work together and how we improve it. We need a dial-a-ride, we already improve for senior. I hope we have a more ridership for the dial-a-ride. Do we have a more ridership?
Yes, it has increased.
Has increased, right? Because before, we don't know, we don't have a Saturday. Now we have Saturday for them. A lot of people go out, we want them to go out, okay? So, so they can have a chance to, we even allow them to go three mile out of city boundary so they can go to any places they want. We don't want to confine them in a place. At the same time, we did the Uber tryout, okay? Do we have a ridership for that?
Yes.
So it's pretty popular?
It's growing.
It's growing.
Yes.
Meaning it's not, okay, totally, we use up the money yet. It's just growing, it's growing.
He's going to give us a report.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So increment a little bit, okay, growing, okay? So, but, but so how your suggestion, how, what should we do based on all this, Kelly? Okay, all this very, okay, detailing and I think you spend a lot of time, this is from you and Kelly, right? Only Kelly, this is from you?
Myself and the consultant.
From the consultant, from the last guy?
Right.
Oh, okay. And you helping him?
We provided a lot of information when they went through the process of working, we worked directly with the consultant on information.
Got it.
When he developed these options.
How do you think? Okay, the point is this, since you are driving the bus, your company, how you think which one will create a little bit more ridership? So accommodate our senior, accommodate the people don't, cannot drive, accommodate, okay, the student, with their own consideration. So you should know that route should be better than the consultant.
Well, and I'm Judy Smith, I'll just introduce myself to some of the new members that are on the, on the council. I think that there should be probably a option that would kind of combine the possibly micro transit along with the regular fixed route services. I know there's an option on the table right now about that, but I think what's important that I know it's difficult for you guys to get a report tonight and say, okay, what am I going to select? I really think that there could be a meeting with some of the stakeholders in the community or maybe one council member to actually walk through all the options and really be able to spend some time looking at.
I think Mayor can take the ride with you guys.
Yeah.
So you can find out.
Different.
That would be ideal, yes.
I think you did, right?
But I think a working group, if it's appropriate, a working group should look at the consultant's options and determine if either any of those options work or maybe take that information and develop your own option path forward with their stakeholders' input.
Understand, but do you have a suggestion? My point is since you're driving.
I have a suggestion of having a portion of a fixed route in some areas and a micro transit in the areas where the ridership is, is not where it should be. And I believe that was an option that was outlined by the consultant, but it, you may determine the boundaries that he applied to this process may not be what you deem is appropriate for the city.
Right, correct.
So that's why I think it needs to be more time spent probably delving into all of those options to determine which is the best for the city.
Because my personnel will trust you guys more due to you driving, you operate, so you know the ridership.
I also, I also think that with the red and blue line being the least active lines, I do think that a realignment maybe including, I believe we talked about including the West Covina High School might improve some of the numbers.
Okay.
Those two lines.
Okay, I think maybe we can, okay, kind of working process, okay, and get your input because your input is very important, my, what I'm thinking, because you guys know, okay, the area, you guys know your bus is being empty, you guys know where is the people. Maybe we can try here, try there and to pick up the people. So in that way, we really serving the people rather than just driving the buses, okay, and doesn't do anything, right? Okay, so, so you feel like it's such a waste anyway. I know that you can make money, but I don't think you want to just waste the energy or waste the time and the bus driver just like, what the heck I'm doing here? Okay, so, so hopefully we can create something, okay, with your input. Kelly, can we?
Is that one of the options?
Yeah, can we do that? We, it's a working process, right?
That you just mentioned?
Yeah.
Combination.
Common to add maybe high school into it to get the route alignment, so in that way, okay, and then maybe even matching with a full-hill transit, okay? So go over here, they can hop in the transit to go to.
Can you repeat that so that Kelly can hear? What is it that you were recommending?
To realign the red and the, and the blue lines to possibly include or connect with the high schools.
Okay.
Is that an option that's already on the table here or not?
Yeah, there was an option to modify some of those existing lines to include those, include the schools. It was that last slide with the highlights on it to maybe alter those routes a little bit.
Kelly, Kelly, I'm sorry, okay, but I think due to you provide so much information, okay, and we really don't know which one really can help, that's why we bring the, okay, okay, the. That's why we bring the, okay, okay, the, the operator over here to provide maybe some fine tune.
Sure.
Okay, and, and then maybe mayor can go to have a ride, okay? And to see, okay, how the true, okay, situation will be and then we can kind of finalize which route that can really pick up more people. Uh, we, we continue to, we can continue to progress, again, to make a route that will be more sufficient to maybe north and south, north and south and east and west and to kind of, okay, put it together. Is that possible?
Did you say red and green?
Red and blue.
Red and blue.
Red and blue. So, because this is right now just one portion.
Yeah.
Maybe you can get more input, okay? Have, have, Kelly, have you talked to them? Okay, yeah, all the time?
Uh-huh, yes.
Why you didn't give you the information to, why you doing over here? I'm so confused.
If I'm, are you guys looking at an option to not necessarily the ones here, but a mixture of, um, on-demand and the fixed route? Yeah, the micro and, and the fixed, so like keeping a shuttle and possible.
We're, we're listening to whatever they're saying.
Their suggestion, because they, they operate.
Because we don't, I don't ride the bus. I don't think any of us here ride buses, so.
Yeah. And, and Ollie, yes.
Okay, Ollie, then you're.
Ollie is a professional.
The professional here.
Okay, okay.
Madam Mayor, just as to sort of supplement, would there be a way, because I've, I've called and sometimes I've been told you, you had to wait a few days because it's already all booked for dial-a-ride, you know, for my parents and such. So is there a way to sort of do a hybrid where there could be a modification of the fixed routes, uh, as described, but also if you already have a call-in center feature already for people who don't have the technology know-how to use their apps? Let's say they're senior citizens or people with significant disabilities who can, who don't know how to do that, for them to, to call in and then you would tap in and partner up with having, uh, helping to book, uh, people on the microtransit? Is, is that a possibility? Because I've heard of that in other places, but is, um, a madam, this, madam city manager, is that a possibility to sort of enable them to maximize the infrastructure that we already have where people could call in and ask for microtransit? Or they could do dial-a-ride, but then if dial-a-ride isn't available, then right away, then they can say, well, we have this other option and then, then microtransit can be leveraged through them so that way they could be almost a booking agent and that would, that would be a way that we, we could still leverage their services, but at the same time, um, do it efficiently.
I, I, before you answer, I want to add on why his question. When you say microtransit, is that similar to what I just mentioned, San Gabriel ride, share ride, you dial, then they show up and they pick up people? Is that similar to the microtransit?
It's similar to that. It's like, uh, it really, microtransit is really like a dial-a-ride. It's a, honestly.
And, but it's a share, share ride.
It's a share ride, that's.
So it's, it's a similar to San Gabriel ride, okay? San Gabriel ride, they just implement right now, so the entire, you, you heard about San Gabriel ride, right? Uh, the ride in San Gabriel, it goes San Gabriel ride, okay? But in the buses, they have a San Gabriel ride and they, it's a share ride, but you dial or you put the app, then they show up to your doorstep and they pick you up and they go to, okay? And then, then, then it's meaning you need it, you have them. You can answer his question. Okay, thank you.
We, we actually run a microtransit, uh, program for the city of Los Angeles and we do have the option where the person can, uh, either call in if they don't, if they're not familiar with the app or have tech savvy, or they can use the app to book their ride. So there, there's, there is that option to do, to do just that with, uh, with the microtransit services. You don't have to have, must have the app in order to use the service.
You can dial, you can dial.
You can call in and get an agent on the phone.
A lot of senior, they, they have a hard time to go to the app. They like to use the phone.
Right.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Yeah, so, so.
After that, then, Kelly?
So, so, so we can do both, we can get, okay, and, uh, improve realignment route to try to find, we can do a mass transit and then at the same time, uh, we can have a microtransit like a, similar to San Gabriel ride, then over here we call West Covina ride, okay? And then in the boundary of a city, then they pay like $3, okay, or something and they can go to the entire city, any places.
I do want to add though on the microtransit component, um, just so you know that, um, when you service schools on a dial-a-ride service, there is a special certification you have to have. So most microtransit con, uh, services will not drop right in front of the school, they have to drop maybe a block away because of special certifications required by the CHP. So that's something that, you know, Kelly, as we, as we, um, explore all of this, we make sure that we, uh, discuss that part of it too, it's because it kind of changes the, the, um, the, uh, certification and a license of the actual driver and the bus has to be registered a certain type of way if the expectation is that we'll drop, pick kids up at their home and drop them at, at the school and, at the school zone, especially the younger kids.
And there will be background checks with that, oh, sorry, didn't mean to speak out.
No, no, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And so there'd be background checks with those, with those drivers to make sure?
Oh, yeah, so we do that now. We do have back, all of our, all of our employees are, uh, required to go through background check.
Great.
Yes, they will, they will, CHP will kind of lead that in this, if, if in fact we, uh, the parameters of the type of service we provide, uh, would take kids from like their home to school, directly to school and back home. It's, it becomes quote unquote like a school, school bus and that's a different certificate, potentially a different type of certification.
Mayor Protem?
No.
And thank you, Mayor. On the option two where it was the, the mix, why was that microtransit route, uh, restricted?
Why?
Yeah, you, you had, it had that limited area and that's why people, um, were, were against it.
Right.
But that was a con. Why, why was, why is it restricted?
Just because it, to delineate the two services, I guess, I guess that was the consultant's rationale. I, I, I don't know why that was limited to, to that area. Cameron seemed to be a natural central, you know, splitting the city in half, I guess. And that's all, I'm guessing.
Okay.
I don't know.
Because micro, microtransit isn't just driving around, right?
I'm sorry?
Well, microtransit wouldn't just be driving around on that route, so I, I guess.
No, it's on demand, right? That was just.
Right, so that's why I, I, I don't understand why for option, option two, which was a mix.
Right.
Why was the mi- microtransit limited to that section of the city?
It was, uh, Cameron was the, is the boundary, so is everything south of that. So all the way south is, so it was really splitting the city in, in, I think it was in two, uh, you had the, the red line, the proposed red line, uh, serving the north and the, the balance of the city was being serviced.
So the microtransit couldn't go north of Cameron?
Right, and that's what people didn't, well, that was what was proposed and, so that was, uh, confusing to folks and it.
Yeah, it's confusing me, why?
Right.
Right, because why would it stop there?
Exactly.
Oh, go ahead, thank you.
I recall it was based on ridership, so it was like everything south with the green route, the ridership, that's why the consultant, I think, suggested that, that it only be in that area.
That only, only people south could access the microtransit?
Right.
If you live north, you, you couldn't access the microtransit?
Right.
It'd be the fixed shuttle route.
The shuttle, because that's where the ridership was supposedly.
Okay, but, and we don't have to do that. We, we could allow microtransit.
Citywide, yeah, sure.
Councilor Wu?
Yeah, I'm, really quick, I, since you, you don't know the ride, San Gabriel or ride SG, this is, uh, councilwoman Denise, okay, Manchaca, okay, they post on the Facebook, so, okay, and some people forward to me, say since we want to discuss this, so, so maybe I can share with you.
We do have the information. Sorry, councilman. We do have information on the ride, San Gabriel.
Yes, okay, so I want to say the ridership, it's a ride-share service available from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. We see the San Gabriel city limit, the cost of each ride is $1 and accessible for anyone age 13 and above. Kid under the age of 13 can only ride if they accompanied by a fare-paying passenger. So just download the ride SG app, it's free by using the ride SG. So just want to share with you, uh, San Gabriel already implement this program, okay? And I don't know, this program will be helping our resident and this is like, you can know southeast, west, you only can do it. And I saw the picture, okay, this is, uh, like a minivan and, but they painted, okay? So I don't know, this is maybe another way to help people, help student, okay? And I don't know, 13 years old, they can ride by themselves, so it's kind of, they're underage. But anyway, this is San Gabriel, so we want to see, we want to explore all different kind of option, okay? Try to utilize, okay, to move people around, okay, especially student and senior. So, so I don't know, this is maybe another, Kelly, okay, maybe this is another option?
Right, it's basically a micro, microtransit program. They replace their dial-a-ride with this, uh, on-demand program, uh, and as you mentioned, it's, uh, seven to seven, seven days a week. They have a couple of minivans in service and, uh, a couple of cutaways like we run. They're all wheelchair accessible and they charge similar to what we do for?
Dial-a-ride.
I'm sorry?
Uh, like a dial-a-ride, $1.
Right, $1.50 for elderly and disabled.
Yes. Based on this, what she posed, $1 a person. Okay, so, so again, who, how can we utilize all the different service, okay? And that we can provide and, uh, at the same time, we want to see how can we work together? At the same time, my possible people still want the, the alignment route, like the one green or blue and very popular. So, 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 so we don't have to make decision today, right?
No.
We just try to communicate and try to brainstorm and see what we can do the most and maybe you can share with Kelly and continue to work on. Do we have to make any decision?
Just, just on the extension.
By, so we.
Extend the contract.
Okay, we need to extend the.
We need to extend the contract?
Um, but Mayor Protem has a question.
Yeah, last question. So on, on the, it's, the, on the fixed line, uh, is, is the reason we, they didn't extend it like to those schools is because it would be longer in terms of wait time? Like if you extend more stops, does that expand the wait time?
Yes.
Okay, so that is something we'd have to consider, right? So if we expand to go around certain high schools, then instead of a 30-minute wait time, it, it then become like a 45-minute?
Right.
Okay.
What, uh, what we were talking about, um, earlier was it, uh, in, in Downey, they run special trips for schools during those busy times. The, the bell, uh, the bell times are a little, you know, all over the place, but, you know, um, in the early morning and the afternoon, you know, run a, run a trip around the schools and, uh, you know, not have so much service during the dead times of the day. So that's something that we can consider and maybe refine the, uh, refine the times.
Okay, and, and I just want to move, move the motion, okay? I'm going to make motion to extend, uh, one year, okay? And during this period of time, and let's work together, see how can we be sufficient, efficiently to have a route and, or any other, okay, potential, okay, share ride or microtransit so something can make people can utilize the service. So this is my motion.
Clarification, if we extend the contract, we can still make changes during this next year, right? As, as needed, as we reconfigure?
As we take a look at, uh, what the, those, those hours are and what, how we want to adjust them, uh, I have to delve honestly into, deep into the contract on other material adjustments. We've made some, a few within our contract already on, on some of the routes, but, uh, we certainly will take a look that, look at that and would definitely want to partner as we move forward. Possible changes, if we want to make some changes there.
Yeah, I want to clarify.
If we went to like a microtransit service, I mean, that requires, you know, uh, procuring buses, uh, software, there's a lot of different things tied to that as well. It's outside of our current.
Since your, your, your contract expires September, so we need to either get rid of you or we give you extensions, so we can continue to work on. No, I think your service is valuable, okay? Even you have empty buses, I think so we see a lot of time we have event and you, you got doing the great job. So I see, I saw the value, I see the value, but see, but the, the thing is that I think everybody concerned is the empty buses and, uh, so let's, let's work it out, see, we, we, we allowed to change and to do both side with Kelly and see, to experiment some of the route, but, but again, we need the rider to know we starting changing, okay? And so they don't miss the bus.
Yes, there, we could, we're certainly here to partner with you to make, you know, changes, options, uh, that will be best suited for the city and will work together with you, uh, that process.
And including explored the San Gabri- ride SG.
Right, I'll, I'll, I'll pull that up and take a look at what they're doing.
Can, can kind of using old way to make sure that people can utilize your service. So, okay, so I'm.
So we can, if there are changes that we want to make, we will be able to change them?
We can change it, but it potentially because of the needs of the contract, if you go to like, say to microtransit, it may require, uh, require getting the smaller vehicles into the system or the software, there's, there's, there's expenses and stuff associated with those types of things that certainly we can change, but I just wanted to make sure that, that, uh, it's understood that, that there's, there's some impact to that as we move forward. We will definitely put everything on the table, work with Kelly and see what, come up what's the best, uh, option. It may be a moving target, you know, we try this, if it's not quite what work is working out, we can tweak and, and move forward with that.
My, my understanding, even we extend you 12 months, we, if we have any change, we can still terminate, right?
Yes.
Okay, so with what reason we can terminate? Without any reason?
Without cause.
Without cause. Hey, but we don't want to terminate you, we just want to, okay, that you know we can terminate, but we want to work with you, let's extend for 12 months and at the same time, let's working on the ridership.
We'll get something.
Councilman Cantos, do you want to say something?
It's a possible amendment, I mean, I hate to be a bad guy, but like, what, can we extend it by six months and see where we are and then, and then from there, look at it again, so that way that'll give us a nimble ability to, to modify the contract? Because I, let's say, for example, we identify changes, but we're locked into a contract for an entire year, then we can't implement the new change we want until a year passes. So I don't know if that's.
If I may, we can terminate without cause. So I think it's 30-day notice.
It's three months, you want them, they can terminate them, okay? But.
Okay.
So you can terminate anytime you, but, okay, I think it's the contract duration normally is 12 months, but we can terminate anytime.
Okay, then second.
So, so, yeah, thank you so much.
Can we move this forward, please? Okay, thank you.
Roll call?
I'm sorry, can I confirm who's second?
Second.
Thank you.
Councilman Cantos.
A motion by Councilman Wu and a second by Councilman Cantos to approve a one-year extension. Councilman Wu? You? Councilman Cantos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Tabat Tabai?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Item passes 5-0, Mayor.
Okay, I think that was our last one. Anyone, um, have any comments or any?
Quick report, um, just to say, uh, Madam Mayor?
Uh, Councilman Cantos?
Just wanted to, to thank the community, uh, for, for all of the support that has been, um, shown to school kids throughout this, uh, throughout the city. There've been, uh, school supply drives all over the place and I wanted to really be, uh, to express gratitude to, uh, to everybody for all the different school supply drives. gratitude to, to everybody for all the different school supply drives. One that I was involved with, I was approached by Covina Valley Unified School District for some help. Last year, they supported only 100 kids, but I got involved and thanks to a lot of partners, including Athens Services and Costucci Foundation and Andy McIntyre and other private donations and Reach and Gabby Solis and so forth, we were able to ultimately to support 700 kids. So just really appreciate everybody and I just wanted to say thank you to the whole community for all of the support that we showed to our, our, our city's kids. It's just amazing. I love West Covina.
Councilman Wu?
I have a quick one. I just want to echo Councilwoman Leti Lopez regarding the Friday, 6 o'clock film, okay, I think become a very successful event and we have a movie star want to show up, even they are on strike, they still willing to come to West Covina, okay, because we are so deserved for their present and we honored to have them to talk to our children, our kid. Okay, I think it's a great event, so 6 o'clock, right, Friday, this Friday, so don't miss it, okay? I see you guy over there.
Anyone else? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to reiterate what the mayor said earlier tonight about Carolyn. She was an extremely special individual to the community, was always very supportive, always shared with me and, and really just mentored and made you feel welcome no matter where you were. And so again, it's a great loss to the community, but I think it's wonderful what everyone's been doing, what the mayor said earlier. She is someone who truly deserves it and I am just fortunate to have known her. Thank you.
So I just wanted to share this, even though I know it's work-related, but obviously a lot of things that I take from work, I bring here because I want to prevent that from happening or I want to make our city a better place. So recently, the past two weeks, I've been dealing with, I had a shooting and a murder, one outside during baseball practice and soccer, where all the little kids got to see it, broad daylight, and I just had a recent one, another, another one, didn't even give a two-week period of cooling off for the community. I had another one on Saturday inside our gym. It's been, it's taken a toll on, on staff, the community and everything. So, you know, as a councilwoman, you know, I strive for safety, safety is always my number one thing. Today, I know with the flock camera, that makes, it hits home for me because, you know, it's not only just prevention that I'm looking for, it's also justice and more importantly, closure. I know we've had, you know, the Gabby situation and closure is very important to families and so, you know, with the flock camera, it, it is ability to have that closure when you can catch the suspects. You know, I know crime is up everywhere. The past two, three years, it's just been, just been hard. I mean, just even here with, with my own colleagues, every week, there's a shooting at a different park. We've seen crime, you know, I know our residents here mentioned, well, we had, you know, crime is up. Yes, crime is up everywhere. You know, we've had, you know, you see it on the news, smash, grab and go, graffiti, vandalism, it frustrates me. I know our laws are weak, the whole Gascon situation, you know, especially because these are youth committing these acts and, you know, when I see, you know, police officers catch the same kid three times with a gun, gets released out because they're not, you know, the rules that we have in place. You know, I just urge our residents to make sure, you know, be careful who you vote for. Don't go for Democrat, Republican, I don't care about that, it's, you know, what the policies are. Our city of West Covina, I want to remind our, our city that, residents that the PD does such a great job again, especially when it comes to gangs. You don't see that because they prevent that. So, you know, I get to see the difference of night and day, so I just, you know, want to remind, you know, residents that we are blessed in, in West Covina for a lot of things that our city does, our police, what our police do, continues to do. As for the graffiti, I know there's an increase on that. I just, if we can have the city just send out a reminder of graffiti, reporting graffiti, anonymous, and then reward, because I also want to reward the good citizens, because I feel like in today's time, we're penalizing the good citizens, we're penalizing our poor businesses. I mean, why do they have to fix these things? It just, you know, our, one of our resident who owns a business, the dairy here, Mike Tui, he's thinking of closing down because, you know, cars break in, they're stealing, it's just the insurance purposes, insurance stop, like wanting to stop paying these things because all these things occur. And so I just, you know, if you can bring that out, I know, you know, and politics has a big factor in this too, because I'm in the middle of our own council member and the mayor, especially when one does not like the other, it's harder to get certain things passed.
Not talking about West Covina, right?
That's, no, yeah, they're not talking about West Covina, City of LA.
LA City, right?
City of LA.
Thank you, okay.
I want to correct that, you know, you know, I mesh things in and here, you know, for the most part, your, your city council, even though we have our disagreements, we do work well together on that case, but, you know, in regards to safety. Also, I do want to follow up on my request that I made six months ago to have our own prosecutor, so that we're able to prosecute crimes since, you know, there are no consequences. So I just want to make sure that we follow up on that again, because I want to make sure that we punish the bad behaviors and reward, you know, the good. And we've been focusing on like letting go of all these criminals, the acts, the, the bad behaviors and, and, you know, I don't like how things are going, but, you know, here as your councilwoman, you know, I urge, you know, residents, if you have solutions, by all means, let us know and there's things that we can do. But I do like, again, push for that prosecutor that I've, I've put in, you know, again with that Gascon, the directives and all that stuff and because it hits home here and, you know, again, the Olympics are coming, you know, we have the homeless issue, we just have a variety of issues and, and there's not a one answer for all, but if we can find ways, that would be great. But of course, this, this is a big thing for me to, you know, just punish those crimes. And again, thank you PD for all that you do and keeping us safe and I just wanted to, yeah, thank you guys again for keeping us safe and doing what you can do despite your hands being tied and what the laws are given that's out of our control, so thank you.
Okay, and really quick, I want to follow up, while you just say, okay, we'll be quick one, okay, don't worry, I won't be long till tomorrow. Okay, but the thing is this, Gabby still, we haven't solved the crime, okay? And Gabby, okay, that time, we don't have a camera. And because Gabby and you pushed to flood camera and the police, okay, chief, okay, they installed this for two years, they paid for it and now we city have to pick it up and the effect is tremendous, okay? And just a couple of months later, okay, we have 13-years-old or 14-years-old girl, okay, crossed the Azusa Avenue, cross street of a spot plaque and then she want to go to, okay, cross street of her home and she got hit by the, okay, 17-years-old, okay, under influence, okay, of around the red, ran the red light and killed a little girl. And without that flood camera, to today, there would be a cold case again. So I think the flood camera, it proven, okay, is really, okay, can prevent the crime, scan the license plate and when the crime happened, okay, they will have that camera to go to that license plate and catch, okay, the criminal that committed the crime. So, so I think left flood camera really, okay, become a very effective, so I wanted to follow what you say. We cannot change what, okay, the law or the issue, but at least we can do something. I think, okay, the flood camera that install and that we can kind of help out, okay, our current situation, okay? Thank you.
I just, I just want to make sure we make city of West Covina where people are known to like think twice before you enter our city.
Exactly.
And that's where I want our city to, to get, to that level where they, they would just pass up West Covina and do crime somewhere else. So that is my main focus and I just want to continue with that as we go, as we journey on. Thank you.
Well, I have to say, I agree with Councilwoman Leti Lopez Viado and Councilman Wu about our police department and crime and I just want to make sure that we're all safe and hopefully we can improve and continue to improve our city. That's what we're here for. And with that said, I just want to adjourn our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.